I'd just like to direct the commission to think more about the landowner, too. So.
Oh, gosh. A shenanigan.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. It's 1:15. This is the State and Local Government Committee. Today, we're going to have a public hearing on LD 2264. And I'll ask the committee members to introduce themselves.
Good afternoon. I'm Representative Kimberly Palmelo from House 85, which is standish.
Hello, my name is Mana, and I represent District 95, which is part of Lewiston.
Good afternoon, and thank you, everyone, for coming. My name is Decca Dalak. I represent House District 120, which is part of South Portland.
Good afternoon. My name is Walter Reisman. I represent District 83, which includes Bridgeton, Harrison, and Denmark.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here. My name is David Sinclair, and I represent District 50, which is the city of Bath.
Good afternoon. My name is Holly Stover. I represent House District 48, including the six coastal towns of Boothby, Boothby Harbor, Southport, Edgcombe, Westport Island, and South Bristol, and I am the House Chair.
Good afternoon. I'm Senator Tim Nangle. I represent House District, I mean Senate District 26, which is Wyndham, Raymond, Casco, Fry Island, and parts of Westbrook. And I will be presiding over this public hearing today of the Joint Standing Committee on State and Local Government. The purpose of this hearing is to invite testimony from members of the public regarding proposed legislation that is pending before this committee. The committee will hear testimony from persons present who wish to speak for, against, and neither for nor against the bills to be heard today. With leave of the chair, committee members may ask questions of any person testifying today. Other questions are not permitted. Whether or not you testify, you may submit written testimony to the committee. Please be mindful that testimony is public and is available to all once it is presented. Persons testifying at the public hearing today are advised that the hearing is livestreamed and may be seen and heard by persons watching online, and that a recording of the meeting will be archived. So for members of the committee and those in the room, if you're in the room with us, please mute the audio and microphone on your electronic devices. This will prevent audio disturbances in Zoom and the room here. For those joining using Zoom, if the name you use to sign into Zoom is not the same as the name you used on the legislature's website to register to testify, it may be difficult for us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We won't close the public hearing until we've given everyone on Zoom an opportunity to testify. Third, please do not use the chat function on Zoom. If you're having technical difficulties, please call our committee clerk, Alex, at 287-1330. Finally, all questions from the committee members must be made with leave of the chair. I'll have Representative Underwood introduce himself.
I'm Joseph Underwood, District 5, which is Presque Isle. Good to see everybody.
Thank you. For today's hearing, we will be taking testimony from people in the room and those who have registered to testify electronically, starting with the bill's sponsor and cosponsors. We will take testimony in the following order: those speaking in favor of the bill, those speaking in opposition, and those speaking neither for nor against but wish to add offer additional information to the committee. If you're registered to testify electronically when you're called upon, you'll be promoted from a Zoom attendee to a participant. This will allow us to see and hear you over Zoom. Sometimes when you're promoted, it may seem like you've been dropped from the meeting. You'll be you will reappear and then be able to provide your testimony. In order to accommodate those, all those who wish to testify today, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. If you are presenting written testimony, please provide 20 copies to our clerk, Alex. And when you're called upon, I'll ask you to state your name, your place of residence, and the organization you represent, if any. When you introduce yourself, please be sure to indicate how you would like members of the committee to refer to you, including your title and pronouns. After you're done speaking, and there are no more questions from the members, you will be moved back to the list of Zoom attendees, and the next person will be called upon to testify. Don't forget to unmute yourself when it's time for you to speak, unless you're testifying on another bill today. When you've finished your testimony, please sign out of Zoom and watch the remainder of the meeting livestream on of the meeting accessed from the legislature's homepage. Before I open the hearing, I will remind folks in the room once again to mute the audio and microphone from all electronic devices. As a reminder, members in the room are asked to use the microphone at their seat when speaking. For those joining on Zoom, please keep your microphone muted until it is your turn to speak. LD 2264, an act to further clarify the meaning of private road and public easement in certain provisions of Maine law. This is a committee bill reported out by me. And basically, this is a summation of the work that was performed by the Private Road Committee? Abandon and Discontinue Road Committee?
Commission, isn't it?
Commission. Okay. So there's really not much testimony for me, but a summary, the bill is reported out by the Joint Standing Committee on State and Local Government Pursuant to Public Law 2023, Chapter 387, Section 4, for the sole purpose of having a bill printed that can be referred back to the committee. This bill changes the term "private way" to "public easement" easement and defines private road in the laws governing governing repairs and maintenance of public easements and private roads. And I'll have Representative, oh. Okay. So is there anyone here who would like to testify in favor of LD 2264?
Is there anyone who wishes to testify on behalf of the bill? Seeing none? Is there anyone here who wishes to testify against the bill? Please come forward and sign in, and Alex will get your testimony to us. Welcome. Have you reached down inside and turned that mic on? It's a little weird. You're on. Oh, now you're off. You had it. Here it is.
Okay, I'll try that again. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Senator Nagel, Representative Stover, members of the committee, my name is Tom Doak. I'm the executive director of Maine Woodland Orders, speaking in opposition. I'm sorry to be in opposition, frankly, because this is an issue that we spend a great deal of time on. And we have been before this committee many times on issues around discontinued abandoned roads, and it's a very challenging issue. But we believe this bill has its craft that does more harm than than good to the to the complicated issue. And my organization has brought many bills to this committee in the past several years, and you've worked very diligently in fixing them. I would like to note, fixing some of the issues, I would like to note that the two organizations that represent that are representative, represent landowners on the commission both oppose the bill as it's drafted when the commission voted. We have several issues with the bill. Our biggest concern, however, is that it would compel landowners who have property along a discontinued abandoned road with a public easement to join a road association if three or more of the landowners request it. This is similar to the existing road association law, but there's a huge exception. And the difference is, in the road associations, the people that actually own, the private owners have access, have control of the of the use of that road. On a public easement, it is the municipality that controls the use. So essentially, what this bill would do is say, compel landowners potentially to join a road association, maintain the road, have no control over who uses the road, and the public would get to use the road and not contribute to the maintenance of it. And it's not just vehicle traffic. It could be a variety of things. And we have seen, despite the fact that in Maine, there's a law that requires people that ride, use an ATV to get permission of the landowners, the municipalities have opened these roads to ATV traffic in many cases, and causing additional problems for landowners to maintain. Public easements were designed to prevent landlocking. That's the purpose of retaining a public easement. But they have turned into the road to this Wild West. If you're going to compel private landowners to join a road association and maintain a public easement, then it seems only right that others who benefit should have to pay, and you should compel a municipality or the public to join that road association. And then all would be paying for the use of that road. I want to talk a minute about liability, because in a public road, if you have, if you're a landowner on a public road, you have no liability for damage to the road, no liability for personal liability, no environmental liability. But once a road becomes discontinued or there's a public easement, the land reverts to the center of the right-of-way to the private owners, and all liability is shifted from the from the municipality to the landowner. Liability for people who are injured, liability for environmental reasons, for environmental violations, and the landowner must maintain the road. That's the issue that, that's the biggest issue with these, with these public easements. There are a couple, there are several other issues that we have with this bill. There is a problem, I think it's a, I think it's a drafting error, that there's a section on Section 2 talks about public easement is not repaired or maintained year-round by the municipality, and the rest of the sections drop the word "maintained year-round." I think that's a drafting error. Section 6, 7, and 8, there's a, we have no problem with Section 6, and what that does, in our view, is it says, "A municipality may use public resources to maintain a public easement." I don't think there's any objection to that. I think that's the understanding now. But numbers 7 and 8 seem to then turn around and limit the, when, when they can use those public funds, and we think 7 and 8 are not necessary. And then number, and Section 10, it changes the word "public roadway" to "public way." This helps them deal with bicycle helmets. And I'm not sure that's the purview of the commission, but also it basically, I think the effect is, if you're under 16, you wouldn't have to wear a helmet on a public easement that's not maintained by the town. I'm not sure if that's a good idea or not, but I'm not sure that was the intent. So I guess in summary, I would say to you that we think that there are a number of problems with this bill. And again, this is an important issue, and we are happy to work with it, and we're delighted that the, this committee created the commission last year. We are a member of that commission, and we are committed to working with this. But there are very serious issues here with this bill, and we cannot support it. We do suggest that you might send a letter to the committee, to the commission, and I've outlined three areas that I think would be most helpful. The biggest issue, frankly, is the unrestricted use of these public easements. Remember, these were designed to keep people from being landlocked, and they were designed for motor vehicle traffic or foot traffic. They were not designed to use for other uses. But there are all kinds of things going on in here, and we should try to address the issues about all these other uses that are going on that are not essential to the public easement. Secondly, the liability issues that I've already talked about. Under Maine law, if an environmental violation occurs on a private landowner's property, regardless of whether they caused a proper problem or not, they are liable to fix it. They have, they are liable. And so you have that odd situation here where, on a, even on a public easement now, if there's an environmental violation, the landowner is held responsible for it, whether they had any control of that or not. That is something that this commission needs to address. And thirdly, there are a lot of these public, oh, roads that no one knows if there's a public easement on or not. There is no list. This committee asked the municipalities a few years ago to develop a road inventory and say, "Where are these public easements? Where are these? What roads, what did you do with these town roads? Are they abandoned? Are they discontinued? Is there a public easement or not?" You asked and gave them three years to do a road inventory and asked the municipalities to do that. Not a single municipality did this and reported to you. So we have this odd situation where there's even a dispute sometimes among landowners. Is there a public easement or not? I'm going to gate the road, and then, and then the town can tell me it was a public easement. They may have said, "Two landowners go to court." So there's an issue about what the status of these roads are. And in some cases, towns have discontinued the same road twice. And that makes for confusion. So there are issues there about status of these roads. So those are the three issues that I would like to see, and I believe that the commission should focus on first. With that, I know I took a lot more than three minutes, and I'm, I'm grateful you didn't start the clock, but this is a very important issue. We have a lot of members that are concerned about this. And so I would appreciate if you would send this back to the commission with some direction, and hopefully even come back with something that more people, that we can all agree to in the future. With that, I'd be happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Doak. Are there questions for Mr. Doak? Yes, Senator Nangle.
So you're on the commission?
Our organization is, yes, yes.
And what was your input on these changes?
We opposed these changes.
Okay.
We don't have any problem with the, as the one, the one that, the one about clarifying that the municipality can use town resources, municipal resources on a public easement. I think that's the understanding, and if that needs to be clarified, that's, we have no issue with that. But all the other parts, we do.
Okay. We talked about this briefly the other day, but the compelling private road owners to form an association, wouldn't that solve some of the liability issues? Because then they could purchase insurance if they felt necessary?
Well, the question that, because, well, a landowner can already, a landowner who thinks there's liability can also, can purchase liability insurance already, so they can protect themselves if they need to. What a road association does, frankly, is landowners that, that might not, that there are landowners that, if you're injured on someone's property, that person may have liability, but not everybody on the road. But if you put a road association, then everybody's gonna, everybody's gonna be dragged into potential liability, both personal liability and environmental liability. And then the other part of it is they cannot control the use. The, the towns control who can use the road, when they can use it, and what can drive up and down it. And, and so you're basically saying to folks, create this association, buy liability insurance, but you can't control who's coming in and out of there and what they're doing. Using the road association statute seems to be wrong to us, because there in a road association, those private owners have, have the ability to limit and control the use of who can come in. But, but in this situation, they do not, because the public controls the access in and out. So we see it as adding to the liability of a landowner, not decreasing it.
Okay.
Additional questions for Mr. Doak? Any? Seeing none? Oh, okay.
Good afternoon. I don't know if you'll know the answer to this question. All I know is I don't know the answer, and perhaps you do. I'm wondering what the process is for either the declaration or the establishment of a public easement, whether all of those have already been declared, or whether it's still an ongoing process where a municipality abandons a road or a roadway. Is there a separate step that has to happen in order for the creation of that easement, or is it a function of law? How does it work?
It has been, it has changed a number of times over the years. There are a number of public easements, there are a number of discontinued abandoned roads that have public easements on them. They either were declared as the municipality retained a public easement, or at some point in law that it was an automatic public easement retained. And so depending on when, in the, in this tortured history of this, that, that, that discontinues or abandon occurred, that may or may not be a public easement. And that's one of the big issues is sometimes the town records are not clear. When, when did they discontinue this road? And there are dates that are important to this. But there is, there are still road being, there are still roads being discontinued or declared abandoned. And so this public easement is still potentially out there for new, new ones. I will say, this committee, last year or the year before, made it very clear that future public easements that were retained could only be used for motor vehicles and pedestrian traffic, which includes bicycles. So all those other uses that are occurring. And I'm, your analyst is an absolute expert on this issue, and knows more than all of the rest of us combined, I think, on this, because she's dealt with it many times, but so she will correct me if I'm wrong. But this committee, recognizing those are major issues and not to create more harm, said, "You can't do all these other things on these public easements. You can only use it for the purpose it was originally intended, which was to get people in and out on a motor vehicle or to be able to walk." I, I hope that, that was a long answer to your question, but.
It gets us a lot of the way there. Thank you. But when you were closing your response, I started to worry about people with horse and buggy. I'm sure we could deal with that later.
In many cases, I will say, the landowners are willing, willingly allowing this, these uses to occur. I mean, we have this wonderful tradition in Maine of, you know, there's 14,000 miles of snowmobile trail, 95% of it on private land. There's five, 6,000, there's 6,000 miles of ATV trails on private land. People are willing to do this, but they don't like it when they, they're forced to maintain these things. And over the objection, and there are places they should not be running these things, and that's part of the problem.
So did, sorry, so did we, so that was last session, right?
I think, I believe it was last session.
Okay.
My memory may be wrong, but I believe it was last session.
Did, because I don't remember that.
Yep. The, yes, the last session, yes.
Did we enact that?
Last year, not last year, last session.
Right.
Yes.
Did we enact that?
Yes, you did.
So a public easement can only have cars?
The future ones, the future ones. This was designed, the idea was, let's stop doing more harm while we figure out the rest of it. I think that was the committee's feeling, is let's not make any
Stop the bleeding.
That's right. Let's stop the bleeding. And for us, this bill just adds to the problems, the way it's drafted.
There's a funny story about stop the bleeding, because in Wyndham, we had major private road issues.
Yes.
And all we kept saying was, "We got to stop the bleeding."
Yes, your issue was not a discontinued abandoned road, right? It was more about public use, public maintenance of a private road, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Representative Adams, and could you introduce yourself when, before you ask your question, please?
I'm Representative Adams, District 144, from the Bureau of Towns of Acton, Lebanon. I'm going to pose this question to you. Where are the places in the bill that need to be changed? And if they are changed, would you support the bill?
The, we would support the bill, the Section 6, I don't have the bill in front of me, but I think it's Section 6, that talks about the the ability of a municipality to use public funds or public resources on maintenance on a public easement. That part, we have no
Use of town equipment?
Yes, that one. I think it's Section, I think it's Section 6.
That's Section 6.
Yep. That's the one part that we will have no issue with. Our biggest objection is forcing landowners into a road association, which then maintains the public easement for the public to use. That's the biggest, that is our biggest issue. I think there are some flaws in this bill, but that is our real objection to it. And I, I do want to, I mean, maybe this comes across as negative, and I don't want to, because I, I, I would, I wanted to be able to support the recommendations of this commission, and it's an important commission, and I wanted to. But this is not the answer from our point of view.
Can't call on you, Representative Underwood. Do you have your mic on? Representative Underwood?
Thank you. I just wanted to know, what is a public easement, and how is it used?
So in this case, a public easement is, it was, it was formerly a town road that, you know, that was maintained by the town, municipality, or county, or, you know, it was a public road, fully maintained. And then the, in most cases, the municipality decided it didn't want to maintain the road anymore, keep it as a town road. So they said, "We're gonna, we're gonna stop having it be a town road." The ownership actually reverts to the center line of the road. The private owners on both sides now own the road, but the state, but the municipality keeps the public easement. And that, the issue is the meaning that the public can now use the road, just like they were using it before. But they don't have to maintain it now, and they don't have to keep it to any standard. They can, the, the public can use it. The people that need to use it for their access. And it was, these easements were designed to keep people from being landlocked when they stopped maintaining the road. But the people that have to use it to access the property end up maintaining it, but they do not have the control of who can use the road. And so the public gets to use the road, and the private landowners end up maintaining it.
Senator Nangle?
So, thank you for taking a grilling, because you are very knowledgeable.
I don't, I don't mind the grilling.
So would, and everybody's gonna freak out when I say this, but if we said to the municipalities now, "If you abandon a road, you can't keep a public easement," would that solve a lot of these problems?
This committee has actually addressed that issue before, and they cannot, they cannot get rid of that public easement if it's going to landlock folks. But there is a provision that gives a period of time now that says, "Before you, before you do this, you have, well, you have, first you have to notify." For a long, until a few years ago, you could discontinue a road or declare it abandoned without, without any public, not, without any public process. You've solved that problem. But you cannot just simply landlock folks. But there is a provision in the statute that says, "Before you go through that full process, you let the, you contact the landowners, and if they can all agree to share a right-of-way together, work out an arrangement, then you should, then you should, in fact, discon, you know, you, then you, then you are able to simply say, 'We're not going to have a public easement.'" And that solves, that solves the problem in that case. That's a new law that I don't know that's been used yet, but that was an attempt to, to deal with this, some of the issues you're mentioning.
But that also sounds like additional work that a town would have to go through in order to facilitate that, which they may not.
They simply, they simply have to notify everybody that their intent is to discontinue it, and that they will have to keep a public easement unless, unless you all went to get together. And then those folks that want to get together, if they solve that issue themselves, because there may only be a few people involved in this right-of-way.
Yeah.
You know, if it's, if it's 30, maybe that's not possible. But sometimes it's only two or three people. And they would probably be delighted to now share a right-of-way agreement and not have the public in public intrusion. So in those cases, you know, that was the attempt, at least that was a long process, I think, that the committee worked on to try to address some of these issues.
So what if we said something to the effect of, "If the property owners agree, the town couldn't keep a public easement?"
I, you, you could do that. Yes, you could do that. Right now, it's an option. I believe that, this is my memory of it now. It's an option. The town can still keep it if they, if they want to keep it. But they don't have to keep it. You could say, "If the landowners that all need it have an agreement, then, then they can't keep the public easement." That, that would be probably a step forward.
Any additional questions for Mr. Doak? Yes, Representative Copeland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Lynn Copeland. I am proud to represent House District 130, Saco. So what about if it's just one landlocked person, and they don't, can't share the maintenance? And, you know, you talked about, you know, the sharing it with other neighbors. What if there aren't any?
Well, in the case of creating a public easement, that you couldn't, you can't landlock the folks, so there would be a remaining public easement. I think in most cases, the, the reality in most cases, I think, is that landowners that need the access work together and maintain these public easements. That's been my experience. That's not 100%, but landowners that need it often work together. That doesn't mean every one of them is involved, but often they work, they simply work together. And, and the public easement is retained. The issue then becomes all the other people that use the road and maintain, and have, and are contributing to it, and, and maybe the wear and tear or the damage. That's the, that's the hard part for a lot of these landowners.
Well, you know, we've been working on this for quite a while.
We have, haven't we?
Yes. Well, and what about if if there was a prohibition Well, and what about if, if there was a prohibition for logging equipment? Unless they get a permit from the town and they clean up after themselves? Same with ATVs, but still allow pedestrians and snowmobiles and stuff so that they don't really wear on it, so the homeowner wouldn't have to maintain the entire world's access to this?
Um, I'm, I think in the past, logging may have been an issue, I think, with the standards that you have today. I think there, and there are, there are ways to solve the problem if it's a logger involved. Frankly, I don't see that as the, as the, the biggest issue. I think it's more that, you know, at least in this bill, what you're saying to people is, go maintain the road, get into a road association, but the public is gonna use the road and the municipality will tell you who can go where and what they can use on this. And that is the real frustrating part of this. So, I mean, we, we've made some progress, but then it's the liability issues too that, that fall to the landowner that are the, are really the, some of the big issues. I'm not sure I answered your question.
Yeah, I, I'm actually not convinced that there is an answer to all of this, quite frankly. I lay awake at night thinking about all these different things and, you know, maybe somebody is an active, has an active logger on their property, maybe they don't, they should probably communicate with each other and tell this guy to knock it off, he's making a mess for everybody else. But these things aren't happening. And, and I, I heard you saying about, well, just give the land to the landowners and they can maintain it. But that's like, that's like public land being given to private people.
Uh, I was, I was saying simply that the, that, that if there is no reason that the public eas, the, the public easement was in some cases automatic. There may or may not have been a reason for it. It's simply an automatic, in, in some cases. And not trying to give away something, but if there's no real public interest in, in keeping, in, in, and having that public easement, then, and then landowners agree that we'll get together and we will maintain it because we have to use it to access a property, that seems like a way to get out from under, from the municipalities, to get out from under some of these public easements that they really don't want and they don't really go anywhere. I mean, remember, a public easement goes down the road, doesn't mean they can leave the public easement. You can post your land all the way down a public easement and there's, people can't leave the road. The private landowners outside of the right-of-way can, can keep people from leaving that public easement. And so it may go, it may be nowhere. And so if it serves a public purpose, sure, maybe a municipality should keep it. But most of my experience is very few of these public easements serve a broad public purpose. But the landowner has no ability to limit the use of that. And this time of year, it wouldn't take too many people going down a road to really cause significant problems. And, and a private landowner now, who needs it, now has to fix it. That's part of the problem.
I'm, I'm just wondering if there are other remedies, like reducing taxes on a certain piece of land so that maybe they can buy from the next door neighbor and go down their thing? Or, I don't know, there's gotta be a better way. I'm just not convinced that this.
There's been a discussion about, I know municipality, one of the issues I know municipalities have raised is that they have a, state law requires them to have people roads in a certain, certain condition. And I think in some other states, they have these other standards for roads like this that, you know, you just have to keep it passable. You don't have to keep it to the standard of a town road. That's been discussed in this committee before. I think that may have been a discussion part of the commission. I mean, there's a possibility that some of these roads could just, just enough to get a, you know, a pickup truck down, might be all you really need that a municipality working with the landowners could do, or it could stay as a town road, but doesn't have to be maintained to that high standard. You know, those are things that probably the commission ought to spend more time on. I mean, this is such a complicated issue. Unfortunately, the commission, the commission was designed so you wouldn't have to have this debate ideally because it's such a complex, I've been at this for 10 years and I still don't get it completely, all of it. And, and the idea of the commission is to come up with, okay, here's, here, here are the, kind of a comprehensive set of things that, that, that will make a difference. You're not gonna solve all these problems because there's a history of, well, I think I say in my testimony, well-intended changes in statute that were done, but they caused problems that no one ever anticipated. And now we're trying to undo something that causes a lot of problems. That's where you're at.
Yes, Representative Copeland, another question?
Well, and I had a lot of faith in this coalition coming together, but unfortunately it appears that there, there are polarized groups within it. So I, I see it as not very functional to helping this. That was the idea, is keep it out of this commission, this committee and solve it. So I don't, I don't see that, quite frankly, I don't see that there's an advantage to continuing that committee and commission unless they have, they can come together instead of being so polar. I don't see anything positive coming out of this.
Do you have a question?
That is my statement, sorry.
Representative Underwood?
Thank you. My question or thought is, is, this is the government telling the landowner, private citizens, on how to use their land. And actually, Ali, this, this bill is not needed, as far as I'm concerned. Is that a fair assessment on your part or opinion?
Um, I, I would, I would hope that, as I say in my testimony, I hope that you send this back, you don't pass this bill and send it back to the commission for more work on this issue. I think, I, I, I'm not ready to give up on the commission. I think there are well-intended folks there. I think the issues are extremely complex. I, I think it will take time to get to some resolution here, but I think you also, I hate to see it also done in piecemeal, and this feels like a little bit of piecemeal. And I'd rather something a little more comprehensive come forward. But from a landlord point of view, this is, creates more problems for landowners than, than, than we think, than, than is helpful. But there are issues that I think, excuse me, can be addressed and, but not in, not the way this bill is drafted.
Is there a way that you could work with either a member of this, of this committee or the analysts and to make the corrective changes that you need if it is referred back?
I, I would, excuse me, I would suggest, I have, in my testimony, I have three areas that I would, I think that need to be explored directly by the commission. I know they've been looking at some of those. Those are three that I think could make a, a big difference. I would urge the committee to, to say, to the commission, address these issues and, and come back to us. I think there's one here too, that there's, there's a bunch of public easements that probably serve no public purpose and maybe those should, maybe those should, you know, maybe the municipalities should give those up and maybe that would solve some of this. But there's three areas, particularly at the end of my testimony, that I think, that we believe that would make a difference if the commission can address those issues.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, Mr. Doge? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience with me.
No, thank you for your patience with us.
It's a complicated issue.
It is.
Is there anyone else who wishes to testify in opposition? Welcome.
Senator Engel, Representative Stover, I'm Bill Ferdinand, I'm a lawyer with Eaton Peabody. I'm representing in the Forest Products Council today. I can't do any better than what Tom just explained, the same concerns because we have landowners that are in the same, same position. I think as you look, going back and addressing this issue, it's this mix of private and private ownership, public use with an easement, and you can't control the public use. So I think if we're moving in the direction, I like the direction, if, if we can have a distinct, if there's a private road and they want to form a private road association, that makes sense because there's, they can control the access and things like that. But anytime there's public easement that they can't control, the landowners shouldn't be forced into a road association. That should be voluntary. So they should look at that issue. Can you just have it for public easements? The participation in a road association is at least voluntary and can't be forced on them. The other thing about the statute for the road associations, it says if there's four or more lots, three of the landowners can call the meeting to form the association. And if three, and so you got three out of four, that sounds pretty fair. What if you have 50 landowners and only three are needed to call the association? You could have three landowners creating something that affects a lot of people. So that's something to look at too. It complicates things if you're gonna do it this way. The other thing, I thought that was a good direction, if, if the, if the landowners around the road can figure out, making sure everybody has access, because some people were relying on the public piece of the public easement to access their property, if they can resolve that through easements with each other, they can basically make that into a private road and the municipality should abandon the easement, public easement, because nobody but the people that are living around it are relying on it at that point. So tell the municipality, get out of there, you know, they'll take care of the road for themselves and it is no longer a public easement at that point. So I think there's a number of things that they could look at more specifically that might do better to solve this weird situation between private and public use.
Question from Senator Engel?
So, thank you for that. And isn't there already a statute that says if a certain number of landowners on a road petition?
That's what this, that's what this one is, yeah. That's, that's the statute you're dealing with right now. It's three out of the four.
But I thought that there's, that's, I thought there was an existing one. This is adding that.
No, it, it was tweaking the, the existing one. It just, it changed some language. It added in this idea of, you can do the same thing for a public easement.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and that's where we say that's not okay because it's not a private road at that point. Yeah, right. Yep.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Ferdinand? Yes, Representative Reisman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your testimony. I'm sure you are familiar with his letters or his testimony.
I read it yesterday. I didn't, I didn't commit it to memory, but anyway.
No, I, no, I didn't mean it that way. So the point being is, if you were to think there might be another issue that should be added on to this, do you have anything in mind?
We work together, yeah, yeah.
Well, this is, this is good then?
Oh, yeah. We don't disagree with Tom on these issues. And I'm just adding more ideas that, along the same lines for the commission to think about so that we can get some, hopefully get more clarity and not push people into things that they didn't agree to do, so.
So just a quick follow-up. So it sounds like we've come to a place where we kind of agree that we can't agree, so.
Got some things to think about, right.
If we were to take some of this information and send it back to the committee to work on it some more, that seems like if we include these three things, that's enough for them to work on to come up with a next level of suggestion?
Yeah, I think so. I think they try to unravel it a little bit more and clarify it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Representative Adams?
Thank you for coming today. I'm gonna ask you the same question I asked the gentleman before you. Where are the places in the bill that need to be changed? And if they are changed, would you support the bill?
It's, it's the same answer as Tom's. It does, especially the road association piece creates big problems, so that has to come out. And the section six was fine because it was dealing with that municipal issue. But I think the other issues need to be further discussed if they're gonna go forward, yeah.
Additional questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Oh, Representative Copeland?
Um, I'm just wondering, do you guys go to those commission meetings?
Yeah, I haven't been to them. I haven't been to them.
Okay.
So, and I'm not sure, we don't have a position on that one, do we? No, we don't, we, we could go and watch, I guess, but we don't have a position on the commission.
I'd love to have a link to, for public access so people can see what's going on.
Yeah.
Rather than doing this in a vacuum, I'd love to have a, a link.
Hi, I'm the clerk for the Abandoned and Discontinued Roads Commission. We're on YouTube, so it's.
Can you send a link?
A D R C, I can send it to Lynn.
Thank you.
Later today, so that she has it. And we also have our own website that we were able to get through and find.
Okay.
So that's all, it's up with all of our information, the voting record, how everybody voted.
Terrific. Thank you.
So for our analysts for the work session, you got the, thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify against the bill? Is there anyone who wishes to testify neither for nor against the bill? Who knows?
Since I'm not gonna be directly following what's on the paper, I think I'm gonna go ahead.
Please go ahead while we're handing out the testimony. Thank you.
Senator Engel, Representative Stover, members of the State and Local Government Committee. My name is Roberta Manter. I live in Fayette and I'm testifying neither for nor against LD 2264. I wear several hats. I'm on the Board of Directors of MARA, which is the Main Alliance for Road Associations. I am the founder of Main Roadways, which is an acronym for residents and owners on abandoned and discontinued ways. And I've been living on a discontinued road for 42 years and most of that time I've spent researching these roads, researching the law, researching cases, getting in touch with people all over the state. I hope you will ask me lots of questions because I wanted to jump out of my seat answering most of the questions you've asked. I'm also on the Abandoned and Discontinued Roads Commission and please, please let that commission keep going. We just need more time. I, I have served several times already on stakeholder groups, interest groups that have been formed by either this committee or the Judiciary Committee to study this issue. And we have maybe four or five meetings and it's not enough to come to the answer. And that's why the commission was formed, is to be a permanent commission so that we will have the time to work through all these issues. It's very complicated. It gets more complicated every year that it doesn't get solved and it needs to be solved. So the thoughts that I'm giving you today, it's kind of a mix of all these different perspectives that I've brought into it and hopefully we can bring them together and find some agreement. In applying 23 MRS, sections 3101 to 3106, to private roads that have been designated as public easements to allow public snow removal, there's a phrase in this bill that says, "public easement not repaired or maintained by a municipality." It must be changed to say, "not repaired or maintained year-round by a municipality." And if we made that change, this would be very useful for those public easements which are on private roads that have been designated as public easements. They've done that for the purpose of allowing the town to use its equipment on these private roads for the purpose of snow removal mainly. And that's been very useful for them, but if you don't have that phrase year-round in there, then it's going to mean that I, you can't form a road association if the town does any maintenance on the road. And that would be really disastrous for these road associations. And I can give you the places where that phrase should appear. It did get corrected on page one, line 17, but not in eight other places where that phrase appears. but not in eight other places where that phrase appears. Page 1, Line 28, this is in my testimony that I've given you. Page 2, Line 6, 19 and 36. Page 3, Lines 15, 22 and 36. And Page 4, Line 4. If that phrase "year-round" could be inserted into that sentence, that would fix this for the road associations that are on private roads. That doesn't fix it for public easements that are on abandoned and discontinued roads. And I'll get into that in a bit. There are some cases where a public easement provides the only hope of access over a discontinued road. And as Mr. Doak was saying, when a road was discontinued under the old statute before 1965, in most cases, it reverted to private property of the centerline. And this could leave properties completely landlocked with no legal access. And so some towns and counties took up the practice of saying, well, we'll keep a private way over these roads. And their intention, back in the early 1900s, their intention was just to preserve access for those landowners. And it worked very well for years. But then the court came along and said, well, you can't really do that because if that land was supposed to go back to the landowners from whom it was taken when the road was formed, then in order to give access to the guy behind you, we've got to take the land of the guy in front. And that's a taking of private property for private use. And that's unconstitutional. So they came up with this creative solution that, well, they aren't really private ways, they're really public easements. And that gives it a public purpose. So then it's okay to keep this public easement when we discontinue a road. And then they changed the law in 1965 so that since 1965, when a road is discontinued, it automatically becomes a public easement unless there's a clause in the discontinuance order that says that they don't want to keep the public easement. Well, the problem with that is that a public easement has basically no restrictions on it. It means everybody can use it. And people who don't need that road for access to their property don't really care what they leave behind them. So you've got mud runners. You've got people who think, oh, here's a great place to dump my trash. You get all kinds of people using it because they don't care what they leave. And then the landowner, who has to have that access in order to get to his property, is stuck with maintaining a road.
Ms. Mantor, if you could just get to the heart of your testimony because we've already used up the three minutes and we want to get through your testimony.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was hoping you could give me unlimited time the way you did for Mr. Doak, but sorry.
We'll extend it a little bit. But if you could really focus on your testimony, that would be helpful.
Okay. So Sections 3101 through 3104 should not be applied to discontinued roads that remain public easements. Compelling private maintenance of a public road takes private property for public use without just compensation. And it also compels that landowner to put his labor into the road. And that's involuntary servitude. My husband has been serving unwillingly on a road for 52 years. He needs to be released from that. In order to fix this, we need to look at the origins. There are at least four different ways that a road can become a public easement. It can become a public easement because of discontinuance that automatically makes it a public easement. Some of those old roads were made public easements because they were declared to be a private way so as to keep access. Originally, a private way was a road that was laid out at the request of the landowner who needed access to his property. And now we have roads that are privately owned roads that were laid out in a subdivision where they have designated them as a public easement in order to get snow removal. And these shouldn't all be the same thing because they're really not the same thing. And we've got one term that's a catch-all for them all. And trying to give them each a new term is going to just confuse the terminology that much more. I think maybe what we need is a definition that says, you know, definition one means this, definition two means this. And then maybe have an alternate name that can be used for them to designate which is which. But we've got to keep the old terminology in order to keep confusing, keep from confusing things. To answer some of your questions.
I'm going to interrupt you again. If you could just focus on your testimony so we can get through it, and then we'll answer questions, we'll ask questions. We can't.
I've pretty much gone through quickly what's in the testimony. If you read what I've put in, that'll fill in what I've skipped to try to meet with time.
All right, and then we can open it up for questions about questions we've asked earlier or questions about your testimony, okay?
Well, as I said, I hope you'll ask me lots of the same questions.
Does anyone have a question? Yes. Representative Parlo. There we go. So if some of these changes could be made, would you support this bill? And I have a follow-up to this.
Okay, I would support it being used for private roads if that "year-round" was stuck in there. I cannot support having public easements on discontinued roads. That was not the intent of this bill from the commission. The intent was just to fix the terminology in those private road statutes. But because of the way they fixed it, it became ambiguous. And that's not good.
Can you elaborate a little bit on why you have constitutional concerns?
Yes. The problem is that I... Well, the way I've put it in the past is that there are three possible solutions to the problem of discontinued roads, and all three of them are unconstitutional. The old solution was when a road is discontinued, it ceases to be a road. It becomes private property of the centerline. And that left people landlocked. And access is a property right attached to property. You cannot just take away all of somebody's access without compensating them. So then the next proposed solution was, well, we'll keep a private way. Well, you can't do that because that's taking one person's land and giving it to someone else for his access. That's taking a private property for private use, which is unconstitutional. Then the third solution was you make it a public easement. And the problem with that is that then everybody can use it. And the landowner ends up using his own time, materials, labor, or equipment to maintain a road for the public. You can't demand that private landowners maintain a public road at private expense. That's a taking of private property for a public purpose without just compensation. And you can't fix it by making compensation when you discontinue the road because this destruction happens over and over again. Every time somebody comes in and uses the road, maybe during mud season or uses it injudiciously, they're going to damage the road. And then that landowner is stuck with maintaining it. If you try to fix it by having a road association, then you're saying that he has to. And if he doesn't maintain the road, the other landowners can file a lien against his property. And that's certainly not fair. He shouldn't be compelled to maintain a public road at the threat of having his property taken from him. The solution that they tried, that one of the other ones referred to, of having the landowners get together and form a private road, and then having the town give it up. When we proposed that several years ago, the idea was that if the landowners can all agree to grant each other access, then you're not going to landlock anybody by discontinuing the public easement because they all have that private access. It will be used just by them. They won't have the public using it. They can post it as private. They can gate it if need be. But it will be just the landowners using it, not everybody and his brother. The problem is that then MMA came in and said, well, you have to give towns the final vote on it. They said that it's because of local control, which I don't agree with. But they said that the town has to have the final say as to whether to give up the public easement. So what happens is that these landowners go to all the work of trying to hammer out something they can all agree on. And this can take quite some time. You know, if you have just a few landowners, it may be easy. But if you have one who's a stickler or if you have a whole bunch of landowners trying to get them all to agree to give each other this easement isn't going to be something that can be done overnight. And once they've completed that, then the town gets to say, yeah, we're going to keep the public easement anyway. And all that work goes to waste, and you still have the same problem you started with. There's got to be some way to say that, yes, if there's a public interest, keep the public easement for that interest, but make the town contribute enough maintenance to support whatever that public use is. If there's no reason for it to be public, then get rid of it. Someone suggested making it mandatory to give up the public easement. I think that's a good idea if there's no public interest in it.
Did that answer your question? Okay. Other questions? Oh, Senator Engel.
Okay, so I asked Mr. Doak this question, and I'm going to ask you as well. So I'm thinking of just a dead-end road, right? And we're just going to say it's a mile long, and there's four houses on it. And there's one all the way down at the end. And then a few empty lots on the right, if you're picking up what I'm putting down. And the existing four owners agree to giving each other rights of way and an association. My only concern would be, what about the land after the one mile ends? Am I making sense? If I had a whiteboard, I could draw it out, and everybody would get it.
Okay, so you're saying the road looks like this, and you have houses here, and then a bunch of raw land back here.
Well, there'd have to be a house further down.
One house way down?
Yeah. Yeah, there'd be one house like way down. But then, so we're always concerned about landlocked. But somebody owns the land, somebody else besides that end house owns the land around that. How would we? They would just have to agree to the road association, right?
What happens in a road association is if there are four or more landowners, any three of them can get together and call a meeting to try to form the association. But if the voters come in, if the members come in and vote on it, and they all vote not to form a road association or they vote to appropriate zero funds for maintenance of the road, there's not much those three can do about it.
Right, but if they don't form that association and give each other the easements, then they wouldn't have the... They would have to, I'm going to use the word "suffer", with a public easement, wouldn't they?
Yes, and one of my hopes is that if you offer landowners this choice when a road is discontinued, if you say, okay, you have the choice of forming a private road association, making this a private road, or if you can't do that, we've got to keep the public easement. Then what happens, hopefully, is that that person who says, no, I don't want to agree, after a while, he's going to see that the road is getting torn up by public use. And maybe he'll decide, yeah, maybe that wasn't such a bad idea. I think it should be worded so that if there's a piece of the road that the people can agree on, it would have to be the piece that's farthest in, which often is the case. If they can agree to grant each other a private easement, and maybe just the first two at the entry who don't really depend on the road, they don't want to agree, then if they see that, well, the gate went up after our property, and now the road beyond there looks great, and our part of the road is getting torn up because people drive in, they come to the gate, realize they can't go any further, and they turn around and drive out again, so they use the road twice. Hopefully, eventually, they'll come on board. The other thing is that most of the roads that are real problems in this regard are not dead ends. And this is another difference between the private road and the road that became a public easement because it was discontinued. Private roads are very often dead ends. They're often subdivision roads, and they're just a little network of dead ends or just a single dead end. But discontinued roads, especially county roads, county roads were roads that led from town to town. Even a lot of the old town roads were roads that went all the way across town. And they still, in many cases, appear on GPS as through roads. So people try and use them, and they get stuck, and they tear up the road, and they disturb the access for the people who need it.
Did that answer your question, Senator? Yes, Representative Adams.
Thank you for coming. I'm going to ask the same question I proposed to the other gentleman that were up here, and these are for you. And where are the places in the bill that need to be changed? And if they are changed, would you support the bill? Are you right there with Section 6?
Yes, I would agree with Section 6. They should be able to use town equipment on a public easement when it's in the best interest of the public or when there's an environmental concern, damage to a water body, that sort of thing. I also think, as I said before, that if those eight places were changed, if that phrase "year-round" were put in, this would be very good for road associations. If there's some way to say this applies only to private roads and not to public easements on discontinued roads, then I think this would be a good bill. But the question is, how do you separate between those two?
Yes.
I guess after hearing all the testimony, and I'm going to agree with Representative Collmore on it, it probably needs to go back to the committee and kind of be hashed out, give us something better here, right? Because we're trying to be experts in five minutes, being facetious. And so I would agree the committee needs to do more work on this before we see it. And I hate to ask, but am I able to table this to send it back to the committee?
Not during the public hearing.
During the work session.
To answer your question, that's exactly why it does need to go back to the commission. And one of the things, I thought that the chair of the commission was going to be online. I don't know if you're taking his testimony afterwards or if you didn't make it. But one of the things he was going to ask for was that can we have more meetings? Because, you know, all these other subcommittees and things that I've served on, we've had maybe four or five meetings, and it wasn't enough.
We do have people who are planning to come in.
We've got five meetings left for this year, and it's not going to be enough.
Additional questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alex, I... Alex? Oh, Alex is there. Alex, we have a couple of people coming in by Zoom. Could you? Okay, great, thank you.
And they're in favor.
Yes. We have two pieces of testimony on from Zoom. Both people are in favor of this bill. Hello. Hello and welcome.
Good afternoon. If I may proceed.
Please.
Thank you. Chair Wrangle and Chair Stor, members of the State and Local Government Committee. My name is Jim Katsifakis. I'm the chair of the commission. You've been speaking of the Abandoned and Discontinued Roads Commission. So somewhat responsible for what's in front of you today. And I'll try to briefly summarize what we were trying to do. And then I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you may have. And I'm sure you have a few. This commission and the legislature started the commission about two years ago. We've been working since October of 2022. We had several meetings last year trying to address something that you'd set out for us to do last session. And that is review specific terms that are used in main statutes regarding roads, particularly private way, public way, private road, and public easement, to try to eliminate the confusion that people have using these terms. It's confusion attorneys have, it's confusion laypeople have, it's confusion legislators have. It's, I think, fairly universal that we talk past each other or get confused when we're using these same terms. So we attempted to take a look at those and come up with some suggestions to this committee as to how this situation might be improved and resolved. We had several ideas that we were pursuing. In the end, we decided to pursue one primarily, which was to change this set of statutes. This set being Title 23, Section, Chapter 305, Subchapter 2. Now, this subchapter, which has Sections 3101 through 3107, is called "private ways." But it doesn't really mean just private ways. And I'll try to explain very briefly. Private way is an old term. Private ways, the concept came back from Massachusetts. And when Maine became a separate state, it continued the use of this idea of a private way. A private way was, as Roberta Mantor explained a little while ago, a road that a landowner, usually a farmer, trying to get goods or agricultural products to market, would give to the town, and the town would accept. So the town would accept the road, but it had to be given, conveyed by the owner, in order to connect to the nearest public road. It was how you'd get to town. These were private ways. But there was another concept, too. And that is if a town didn't want to maintain a town way anymore because no one lived on it, it wasn't being used, it was too difficult to maintain, which is the obligation a town has to take care of a town way, then a town could discontinue it. And in some instances, towns would discontinue the road, and there would be preserved a private way or a private way subject to gates and bars, as you'll see in old orders of county commissioners and old town orders. But this wouldn't happen in every instance. And what could happen is you'd have a town way. People would be buying property on town ways, and they would... people would be buying property on town ways, and they would think they had access. But then the town would discontinue that road. That happened a lot in the depression era, or after the depression era, because people moved off their farms. So no one was going out there to the farms. Towns weren't maintaining those roads, towns would discontinue those roads that weren't being used anymore. In order to make sure people still had access, the legislature in 1965 decided that in every instance, unless a town went, said otherwise, there automatically would be reserved a private way. So the idea was people wouldn't be landlocked. From 1965 onward, the presumption is in discontinuance of town way, a private way was retained, and the public could have access, just as the public had access over these old town, private ways that led from farms to towns, and public ways. So all of that was ongoing. In 1976, the legislature reorganized and recodified state road law and said, all former private ways are now public easements. And by the way, towns can lay out public easements in order to get to recreational activities or for, for public lands. So you have this term that we now use called public easement that includes the old private ways to come from farm to town. It includes the leftovers from discontinuances before 196, before 1976. And then it also includes the leftovers in statutory abandonment. Big term. But the U-turn private way wasn't supposed to be used anymore, except the legislature still does, for these sections in Chapter 2, Chapter 305, Subchapter 2, with regard to these roads that are intended to be used for road associations. So we're not, the commission isn't suggesting anything new with regard to road associations in the sense of, you've had this road association law for years. Three or more of, four or more lot owners can get together and form a road association. It's just, what is it that you're looking at for these road associations? The subchapters called private ways. If you think of it as just being synonymous with private roads, great. But the term private ways is freighted with this baggage of what it used to be before 1976. So we were trying to avoid the confusion of using that antiquated term, private way, by trying to state what it really means. What it really means is private roads. And what it also is included and allows now is if you live on a public easement, you could form a road association. And you might want to if the town only does winter maintenance, or the town does no maintenance. Because on a public easement, a town has the right, but not the obligation, to maintain that road. So you have instances where some towns will do summer maintenance, some will do only winter maintenance, some will do no maintenance. If you are on a public easement where the town does no maintenance, you might want the opportunity to form a road association so you could equitably share road maintenance costs with your neighbors. This allows for that. So that was a change, and I agree with Roberta Manter's recommendation of including that year-round phrase. That was an omission. It should have been throughout and not just in the first line. And since, since I was putting together the draft of that, I'll, I'll accept the blame for its omission. And I apologize. But otherwise, we think, we're trying to find a way to get started on a huge problem. This is not the only area with this confusion over what these terms mean and what the terms I described earlier that you assigned to us mean. We thought we were starting on a relatively safe spot, apparently not. And, and so we, we took our best stab at it at the time. There are commissioners who disagree with that. I will say another issue that we took a look at was liability. Because if you are a private landowner, and you live on a public easement, and the town's not maintaining it, but you, like Mr. Manter, work on that road so that you can use it, and the public also is using it, you are liable. You are liable if some member of the public comes down that public easement and is injured or has property damaged. And so we talked about immunity for those landowners who responsibly maintain public easements where the town does not undertake year-round maintenance. But Mr. Doakes' organizations representative and others voted against that. So, you know, there are other issues that we recognize are out there, and we, we want to work with the groups. We encourage them to attend our meetings. They're open to the public, and as was mentioned by our assistant, those are, those videos are on YouTube. We have a website. It took a little while to get that from the state, but the state was gracious and allowed us now to have our own website now on Maine.gov. Please, please participate. We welcome the participation. We are limited by the initial legislation to three to six meetings per year, and we've held one this year already. So we submitted a letter to the committee back on February 2nd asking for up to 10 meetings in order to proceed with the work this year, and also for per diem and mileage, at least mileage. All commission members have been attending these meetings on their own nickel, without any reimbursement. And so we seem fair to at least reimburse mileage for their participation. With that, we ask that you, I'm in favor of this. The commission, as you noted, is a split vote. And so you, you have a record of that vote in our committee. Ask that you at least review this, and if you'd like to send it back for us to, to try to improve it as best we can, certainly, we, we will be willing and to do that work and, and try to get something better back to you if that's the way this committee wishes to proceed. And with that, thank you for your time, and you're open to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Katsifakis. Did I say that correct?
Pretty close, Katsifakis, but.
Katsifakis, okay, thank you very much. Are there, are there, does any member of the committee have questions? Senator Nangle?
Okay, so you've heard, you've heard the concerns that have been brought up earlier. So what would your? So I've got some notes here. Owners, if they agree, the town, so if all of the property owners on the road agreed to take over maintenance and form an association, would it be possible for the town to not be able to keep a public easement? Do you see what I mean?
I, I understand. And, and maybe one way to start is the, the legislature changed the law on this in 2018, in October, for any discontinuances that are proposed after October 1 of 2018, there is a cooling off period, in essence, where the discontinuous process is started, but then put on hold for the private landowners along that road to discuss forming a road association. And then the legis, then there's, there's a choice. The municipality can either take, discontinue the road and retain a public easement, or may discontinue the road without retaining a public easement if there's evidence that the private landowners have reached an agreement, and that evidence would be a recorded deed that would allow easement rights up and down that road. So there's a, that exists in law right now. It's just, it says may and not shall. I think that may be where some members of the commission would, would disagree.
So what if we did say shall?
I, that's a possibility. You may hear from Maine Municipal Association about that one.
Let's see, I'm just trying to think of. Can a road be discontinued if it connects two public ways?
It could be. But discontinuance is as much a political as a legal process in that there has to be notice, there has to be a hearing. And if there were a reason for that road to be in existence, then I'm sure the public would be speaking. The reason for discontinuance is generally because the road is not one that the municipality feels that there's a need to have to maintain anymore as a public way.
Okay. Is discontinuance the same as abandonment? Are they mutually, or are they mutually exclusive?
They are similar but different. Discontinuance is an affirmative act. Discontinuance means that there is a notice that's given, there's a hearing, there's a determination by the municipality's legislative body, and damages are awarded. Abandonment is because the public has stopped using a road, the general public for a sufficiently long period of time that the municipality doesn't have to maintain it anymore. And that's, that's a judicial doctrine. That's common law abandonment. And then there's what the legislature did to try to codify that, to see, to put some parameters on it. Because, you know, if it's, it's common law abandonment, you have to go to court every time and have a court determine whether or not abandonment's happening. It's expensive and it's time consuming. So the legislature has a presumption of abandonment. And that presumption is that if the municipality has not maintained a way for at least 30 consecutive years using town monies, then it's presumed abandoned. There is a hearing held on that as well now. That's, there's more recent changes. But the idea is that there's at least an objective standard that can be applied to determine whether the, when the abandonment has happened. When the abandonment occurs, it has generally the same legal effect as a discontinuance. So the statutory abandonment would also result in the retention of a public easement because it's very similar to. So abandonment just happens because a requisite period of time happens without either the public using the way, or the town maintaining the way at public expense. Discontinuance is a formal, intentional process to stop a municipality's maintenance of the way. Hope that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. I, I. I'm gonna, do you see the? All right, if you lived in a town and on one of these roads? I'm just trying to think of how to put this. If we eliminated the abandonment statute, meaning they can't, they have to go through some legal process with abandonment? Because it sounds like discontinuance has a, a more robust process, right? Would, would you agree?
Well, it's a, it's a formal process, but abandonment has become more formalized too. There still now has to be a hearing, and it can be, the decision now can be appealed to the superior court.
Okay.
Before it had to be, before it had to be a declaratory judgment action, essentially. But now it's the decision whether a road is or is not statutorily abandoned. It can be appealed to court. So I, I think both, both provide protection. I think you're seeing towns using these less and less anyway. A lot of these issues have arisen from roads that were abandoned years ago. And as I say, many of this, many of these roads were abandoned back when farms were abandoned, in the rural areas, anyway.
I'm just wondering if, if we, since they're both statutorily similar, if we just cleaned that language up. The other question is, you said three out of, three or more of four people on a road can call for a meeting to form an association, right?
If there, right, if there are four or more lots on a road, three or more of the owners of those lots, just briefly, could decide to form a road association.
Okay. Does that translate to 75%? So if there's 100 houses on the road, you'd have to have 75 people?
No, no, that would still be the same numbers. And that's something that's been in law for years, so we didn't touch that piece.
Okay. Okay.
Additional questions? Yes, Representative Adams.
Quick question brief. What justifies a public easement versus like eminent domain? Eminent domains based on, you know, public need and, you know, whatever. But what, what justifies public easement on a private road?
Let's say that you bought a house on a, on a road, and it's a town way. But, let's put it this way, you bought some land on, on a road, and it's a town way. No one lives on that road. Town's tired of maintaining it. The town decides that it wants to discontinue that road. You get a notice, your neighbors get a notice. No one has much complained about it because you don't do anything out there. You just bought it as an investment or something. You, you don't care. Or maybe you bought it as a woods road, and whatever. The town then discontinues the road, and without, if there's no public easement, you can't get there if your deed doesn't give you an easement. And your deed probably wouldn't because you bought a lot on a town way. So that's why there's a retention of a public easement to prevent you from getting a, getting a landlocked lot as a result of all of this. If this was a private road all along, and you had an easement, and if the town then wanted to take a public easement, it would owe you damages. And it'd be an eminent domain proceeding or a purchase, a taking. And so, yes, it would owe you money if it were going to take your private road for public use as a public easement. But usually, the reason that there's a public easement is it's a leftover from the discontinuance or abandonment of a town way.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, thank you for being here today and for your testimony.
Thank you.
Alex, we have another person who would like to testify in favor. We have her written testimony in our packets. Margaret Cardoza. We did. This is it. It's a one pager. Welcome, and please go ahead.
Hello, or good afternoon, Chairman Senator Nangle. Madam Chair, Representative Stover, and members of the state and local government SLG Committee. My name's Margaret Cardoza, and I'm on a road association in Wyndham. But I live in Portland too, so year-round, I get to vote in Portland. I'm in favor of your definition of private roads and removing the word private ways. I'm in favor, if there is the corrections on page 1, 2, 3, and 4, to modify the wording of public easement not repaired or maintained by adding year-round by a municipality. But I need assurance that public easements with partial services, such as Wyndham's private and special law, is protected. Also, I wish that a correction to the sentence in Section 6, page 4, where it of 20, Title 23, 3105 dash A, to say to plow, maintain, or repair these public easements, thereby crossing out the word and.
Is that written on your testimony?
Yes, it is.
I'm, I'm looking.
The word and.
I see it. Thank you so much.
My testimony, I forgot to put in the 3105 dash A. Oh, sorry. So what's not in my testimony is I noticed you've crossed out inhabitants and replaced it with legislative body. I agree, removing inhabitants in Section 23, 3105 dash A of your Section 6 because there is a lot of inconsistency of the definition of inhabitants throughout the main statutes. But I cannot elect my legislator in Wyndham. I only pay my taxes. Thereby, I would request you add to the legislative body the words and two-thirds of the landowners on said public easement. Thereby, it would give me a voice. Because the Abandonment Discontinued Road Committee was originally assigned to deal with discontinued roads, they have spent most of their time trying to deal with private roads. I hope you would consider that they do their original work of dealing with private, with abandoned and discontinued roads. And particularly as Neil's statement from Paris, Maine, where he wrote about Title 17 dash A, 505. We have a real big issue of, of. We have a real big issue of obstructions in our roads. I welcome any, oh yeah, and page six, um, line forty-four. Uh, forest, forest, uh, management is exempt from, um, road, uh, this road association. So I'm a little confused since it's already in there in the law. Page two, thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Cardoza? Seeing none, thank you very much for being here today. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify on behalf of, in opposition, neither for nor against, anything for the sake of the good? Seeing none. I will close this public hearing.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, today is, um, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. It's about one fifteen. This is the state and local government committee. I'm gonna ask the members of the committee to introduce themselves, starting.
Good afternoon, I'm Kimberly Pomelo. I represent House eighty-five, which is Standish.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon all, my name is Randall Greenwood. I represent House District fifty-six, which are the towns of Litchfield, Monmouth, and my hometown of Wales in both Andersgoggin and Kennebec Counties.
Good afternoon, my name is Mana and I represent District ninety-five, which is part of Lewiston.
Good afternoon and welcome. My name is Lynn Copeland and I'm proud to represent House District one thirty, which is the coastal part of Saco. To discover a line.
Hello and good afternoon. My name is David Sinclair. I represent House District fifty, the city of Bath.
Good afternoon, my name is Holly Stover. I represent House District forty-eight, including the towns of Booth Bay, Booth Bay Harbor, Southport, Edgemont, Westport Island, and South Bristol.
Afternoon, everybody. I'm Senator Tim Dangle. I represent Senate District twenty-six, which is Casco, Raymond, Wyndham, Fry Island, and parts of Westbrook. And our analyst.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm Lynn Caswell.
So we're gonna start a, open a work session on LD two-two-six-four, an act to further clarify the meaning of private road and public easement in certain provisions of Maine law.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you recall, this is a committee bill. You had a report from the Abandoned and Discontinued Roads Commission, um, as they're required to do. And they recommended some changes to statute based on what the direction, um, to them was in the law. And what you see before you is those recommended changes. Um, before I go into them in detail, I thought I'd just take a moment. And, um, if you go to the second and third page, that shows you everything that this committee has done since the one-twenty-fifth, um, in each session with respect to abandoned and discontinued roads. And because it has been a lot of work. And since the one-twenty-fifth, there have been three, if not four, subcommittees. I was the analyst for two subcommittees and I know that there was one other subcommittee where this group, you know, the state and local government committee got people together and spent time in an interim to try and solve the myriad of problems that exist with respect to abandoned and discontinued roads and public easements. So there has, this committee has put in a lot of work. Um, and you've had a significant amount of bills each session. The commission was established in, um, twenty twenty-one in LD fifteen thirteen. And that, um, established the commission and gave, and prioritized, uh, gave it some priorities. So if you go to the purple sheet, there were questions about the commission and who the members are. The first page lists who the eleven members are, um, by name and entity. And then it tells you on the right-hand side, uh, a member from Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. This is the language right out of the statute of who's a member. So DOT, agriculture, inland fisheries and wildlife. Um, municipalities are represented, woodlot own, landowners are representative, uh, real estate attorneys are represented, land trust attorneys are representative, represented, county governments are represented, um, ATV and snowmobile users are represented. And then, um, a member of the community of the public who lives on an abandoned and discontinued road and also a member of the public who does not live on an abandoned and discontinued road. So there's actually twelve, uh, members that have been assigned and, um, have done the work of the committee, the commission. The second and third page set out what the commission's role is, um, and the duties. And those are on page two of the, um, title twenty-three. Their duties were to consider and, and, um, this committee worked very hard on the duties and the creation of the commission. I believe Representative Greenwood may have been on that subcommittee or Representative Copeland. And, um, Representative Will Tool was on the committee for a couple of years, um, for a subcommittee that came together with, um, this list of duties for the commission to focus on. You'll see that public easement retention is in, is listed, statutory terminology, um, is listed in the duties. They're required to develop recommendations on, uh, ways to address some of the issues. And to review legislation, which they did for you all earlier this session in a different bill. And they are allowed to meet three times, let's see, at least three times and no more than six times. And I mentioned that because you heard a lot of testimony that that is really not enough time for them to get their work done. So that is, and it's, um, established in the Attorney General's office. And I did learn something that I shared with another commission, um, that they have a webpage presence. I sent you that, that email link. They have a webpage present because inform me helps commissions that do not have money to get a presence online. And so I sent that to someone who's interested in the cemetery commission. Because I didn't know that, but that's how the abandoned and discontinued roads now has web presence is because they got some assistance, some free assistance. That's just a plug. So what does the bill do? The bill before you, you heard everyone testify in favor of section six. So I will draw your attention to that first because that's on page four of the bill. That made changes that clarifies, so that's the use of town equipments on public easements. And it clarifies that a municipality, a town, a municipal government, they do have the authority to use town equipment on a public easement to plow, maintain, or repair. It says plow, maintain, and repair. Um, it was suggested that it be plow, maintain, or repair, because those are three distinct, um, activities. But it, it makes it clear that the legislative body can spend town money on limited activities on a public easement. So that is just, uh, a section that clarifies. The sections before all amend a portion of law which is included in, um, the orange sheet, the orange paper that I have given you. And the intent of all of this was to get rid of the, the phrase private way. So a lot of different words are used in statute with respect to roads, whether they're publicly owned or privately owned, whether there's a public right, public ability to have access, public easement. Sometimes it's called a private way. Sometimes it's a private road, sometimes it's a public road. Uh, and one of the things this commission was asked is to try and bring some clarity around language. Kind of as, um, the chair testified, they tried to focus on some easy stuff first. And, uh, obviously the easy stuff is hard because you heard some testimony that the phraseology didn't work. So in the, on page one, um, in the lines fourteen through like nineteen, it uses the phrase, it replaces public way with the phrase public easement not repaired or maintained year round by a municipality. That, the word year round was not put in any of the other sections of law that changed public way to public easement. And that seemed to create a problem with the rest of the sections. What I don't recall you, if you asked, I don't know if you asked the people who testified, if it said public easement not repaired or maintained year round, if every other, um, place that phrase was used, if that would resolve all of the issues that they raised. So that is, I don't recall that question being, I mean, I do recall that Representative Adams asked, are there changes that would make you, um, you know, bring you to support this? I'm not sure if that is something that the people who testified had given thought to. So I think, um, I hesitate because whenever this committee talks about abandoned and discontinued roads, there are about twelve thousand rabbit holes we can go down. And at the bottom, I'll get to the point where I'll be like, it's complicated. It's a very complicated topic. I think that the commission has experts that when they work together can come up with solutions. I just don't want to go down a rabbit hole unless you all have questions on it. So I'm gonna stop now.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, and again, I apologize for not being here for the public hearing on Tuesday. Uh, I did watch, um, and I've, I reviewed, uh, most of the material here. And something that caught my attention was in the testimony of, uh, Tom Doak. Uh, he had some suggestions about priorities moving forward. I was wondering if we could invite him to the podium to discuss those and, um, maybe offer any, any further insight that he wished to offer on if we were gonna refer this back to the commission, just, just some thoughts and priorities for the commission. And I, and, and just, I guess I can say from the get-go, um, I appreciate all the work of the commission. Um, but I think this bill in its entirety is, is probably not good to move forward. Uh, but I think I did hear, uh, from everybody, um, that there was things in section six that would improve. Um, so I get, you know, from the get-go, I'm looking at section six as, as positive. Um, and then I asked Lynn, uh, this morning about, you know, how do we send it back to the commission with further direction and clarification? Um, and, and she said that can be done through, I think, was it unallocated language was the term? Um, but, but I, before we do that, I just wanted to invite Mr. Doak up to talk about some of the suggestions that he had made.
I'd like us to be able to ask questions of Lynn first. You know, we'll bring you up at some, does anybody else have any questions for the analyst? Okay. So I sent you some questions the other day in email. Did you, were you able to answer any of those for me? Or is that something we are gonna look to the experts in the room for?
So I did not have an opportunity to focus on the questions that you asked.
Okay.
But I do, I, I think there may be people here who would be able to answer them.
Okay.
Um, I did invite MMA to come. Um, and Rebecca Graham has participated in most, if not all, of the, um, subcommittees. So she is also, uh, equally, if not more familiar with the law that affects municipalities. I didn't tell her that I was gonna force her to answer your question.
She's smiling.
Surprise. All right, why don't we have Mr. Doak come up and we can, um, see what he suggests. So, uh, let me just say, go ahead, you can say, the, let me just say this. My understanding of this was that it just removes the term private way, private way, yeah, private way from title twenty-three. Is that correct? The entirety of title?
Not the entirety of title twenty-three, just this subchapter two.
Okay.
Which, um, has to do with maintenance and repairs and road associations. So it was a very limited portion of, of tab twenty-three.
Okay.
And, uh, just before you, uh, ask Mr. Doak about priorities, the commission on page, um, the second page of the bill, the law, under section two duties subsection B, it asks the commission to determine priorities for consideration and it gave them the one through six. So the commission was instructed to develop priorities.
Okay, I do have a question about mandates for you, Lynn. If a if a municipality, I'm gonna just say this. Um, so we tried to get a, a road inventory from cities and towns and we got nothing. If we were to say in this somewhere that should a municipality choose to abandon or discontinue a road, they must prepare a complete road inventory. Would that be a mandate? Because we're not mandating them to abandon or discontinue a road. That's a choice they're taking as a town.
So. Language again, please.
It would say towns that, that choose to abandon or slash discontinue a, a road, they must prepare a complete road inventory of the town.
So the legislature has, um, enacted similar requirements that were not identified as a public mandate. For example, when they change the abandonment or the discontinuation process, it requires notice and a public hearing. So it said, if you choose to do this, notice and public hearing. I don't know what a court would think because inventorying roads could be a huge ask. Whereas adding due process to a, a, a
Right.
Process.
Yeah, I get it.
Might not. And I have not looked at legally whether that kind of cost has any influence on, um, how a court would view it. And that, that's maybe a future problem. I think that OFPR, which is the group that would look at it for the bill and the bill, the
Yeah.
This will note would probably say, no, it's still, it's optional. They don't have to abandon or discontinue. So therefore it's not a mandate. I think it would pass that hurdle, uh, in the real world. I don't know if a town would object.
Okay. And then we suspect that adding language where it says public easement not repaired or maintained by a municipality, adding year round to all of them. Like I'm looking at page one, line twenty-eight. And the, the new language is public easement not repaired or maintained by a municipality or a bridge as an easement, yada, yada, yada. But then someplace else, I think it was where Representative Greenwood said section six on page four. No. So there's someplace in here where it says that the municipality maintains the road year round.
Yes, that's on page one on lines, um, line seventeen.
Okay.
So, and I, what I did, um, I don't know the answer of whether the interested parties, whether Tom Doak or MMA or Roberta Manter who testified, those who testified, whether adding year round everywhere, um, in this changes to title twenty-three would address their concerns.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, if you have questions for Ms. Carter.
I, I, I just wanted Mr. Doak, because Ines has to want to identify three areas. If that was an exclusive list, extensive list, or, um, based on the public hearing, were there things that you wished, uh, might be further for consideration?
Uh, thank you. So, uh,
my, my, some of my comments are, are trying to get at the original purpose of a public easement, which was to prevent land-locking. That is the purpose of it. That, that is the purpose of public easements. It's not all the other things that have evolved. It's really that. And are there ways to say, let's get back to the original purpose of a public easement? And that is, those that need to use the road, get to use the road in a, you know, in a way that doesn't burden them too much. And so my, my first, my first bullet on my testimony was about finding a creative way that, that, you know, encourages, that, that can limit or clarify what can be done on a public easement. Because this committee, if you create a brand-new public easement, by statute, you can only motor vehicle and foot traffic. That's what the law says today. And then this committee passed an amendment to the Discontinuing Abandoning Roads statute that said, if you're going to create a new public easement, you can only use it for, for public, for motor vehicles or foot traffic. And then there's this big gray area in the middle about those that had already been created, those public easements that had already been created. So you have this disjoint. Our view is that really they should go, we should, the, the public easement should be for foot traffic and motor vehicles. And that's the original intent. And we should, the commission should find ways to narrow down as best they legally can to get to that purpose, because that is the original purpose. So that was my thought on the first bullet. The second thing is on liability. I mean, that specifically was identified as a, as a task. I think it's a huge issue for landowners. Because the liability, when a public easement is created, the liability for both personal injury of a person on the public, on the public easement, because the land now reverts to the landowner. The landowner is now the owner of that road. They now take the liability that they never had before when it was a public road. They now own both a personal liability, but also the environmental liability. And that is a huge, something that they never had before, and all of a sudden they have it. And there, there needs to be a way to, to, to address that. The law says if you create, if an environmental violation occurs on your property, you as the landowner are legally obligated to fix it, period, whether you caused it or not. If you can find who did it, you can prosecute them. If you convince people that you didn't cause it, you can't be fined. You, you may be exempt from prosecution. But you still have the legal responsibility to fix whatever environmental problem occurred, period. That's a huge issue because they can't control the use. The landlord now, it has the obligation, but they cannot control the use. So that's the, I, that's another issue. I really think there should be some real focus. And I know the committee did work on that, but they weren't able to come to a conclusion on how to address that yet. And the third thing I think has already come up is some of these roads, nobody knows what their actual status is. And so what you have is landowners fighting with themselves, with each other about, well, can, can people go down this road or not? Can they go down, I own, I own this land, can you drive down it or not? And you have legal, you have landowners suing each other to determine what the status of a public easement, of what was a public road at one time. And we should figure out a way somehow to creatively identify the status of as many of these as possible, so that landowners know what the bulls are. And the public knows if there's a public easement or not. And that's something we, we deal with all the time. So those are three of the priorities that I listed. I have two others that I would suggest. One, I think you talked about at the hearing, which was to let the commission meet more than six times a year. I don't know what the right number is, but six, I don't think is enough. This is, I think that's, I think they found that is not enough. And then after the, after the hearing, I went home and, you know, said, okay, what, is there anything else that might be helpful? And I was following up on the discussion that was had in the committee about, you know, if everybody could agree to exchange a right-of-way agreements, you know, so that nobody's landlocked, let's get rid of the public easements, let's get rid of it. There's no, it doesn't serve, the, the original purpose was to prevent landlocking. And if we have a way to make it so that nobody's landlocked, let's get rid of that public easement. And that solves, that solves a huge amount of problems. So one, the suggestion I came up with was some language like, and this would be, again, back to the commission as kind of a sense of direction, is that if the commission could develop a, a right-of-way template that landowners could then use, that say, okay, you know, this, this would satisfy the, the need for a public easement. You know, it, a, a template that landowners could use and share that with the people that are along the road. They may all be willing to sign that, or sign onto that, like a mutual, it's a mutual right-of-way agreement. And then you solve this problem and everybody has the rights. Typically, it would, you know, typically the ones that I've seen are the right to use and maintain, but not the obligation necessarily, something like that. But you don't have to be that specific in it. But I think that would be really helpful, so that every landowner doesn't have to come up with a, gee, here's an idea, here's an idea. I think a template would actually help. And that meets the needs of the purpose of a public easement. And I, I think that might facilitate some of these public easements being extinguished. And then I know the commission, I mean, this committee discussed the idea of, of, you know, if that were to happen, should, should you, should there be a automatic, should the town automatically be, have to extinguish the public easement? And that be something that, I, I'm sure there's a debate on that issue, whether, whether the town would want to give it up. But if the, everybody has access, then the original intent of a public easement is no longer necessary. And I would suggest that that would be an appropriate way to go forward. Because we, if you can reduce the number of public easements and people still not be landlocked, then I think then that is what success looks like in dealing with these issues. So those are my, those are my thoughts.
Okay. Go ahead, Representative Copeland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Doak, for being here and talking about this again. So in that scenario, who owns the land and who's going to get it? So I'm concerned that that's a public easement owned by the public and the taxpayers of that municipality. And they're just going to give it to these other people?
They actually don't give it to anybody. They just extinguish it. It just, it disappears. It doesn't give it to anybody. The landowners already, the landowners on that road own the land. They actually own the land. The only thing that the public holds is a right to cross this property. So they're not, and, and if you're extinguishing it, you're not giving it to anybody, because you can't under the Constitution. We could solve, if you could legally give everybody a right-of-way that needs it from the town and just say, here, everybody has one. And if you, to keep you from being landlocked, and then we're going to get rid of the road, that would be simple, but there's not, there's a constitutional issue with that.
What about maintenance?
About maintenance?
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, if you had a right-of-way agreement, that just, that everybody does have, the individual landowners have shared, you know, each landowner that, that is along that road would, would, would exchange a right-of-way agreement, so that we, everybody has, everybody on the road has the right to use the road, use the portion of the road that belongs to that other landowner.
But suppose the third house in doesn't do maintenance on it, and the fourth and the fifth house can't get through?
Those things, those things happen all the time on private roads and they get worked out. But you can also, at that point, you could theoretically create a road association. And you could use the road association statute.
And then some people will pay and some won't.
At that point, you could, you have that possibility of a road association at that point. Our issue with the bill is, it seems to imply that landowners could be forced into a, into a, into creating, being part of a road association and not control the use. They would, anybody in the public could use it. So the, everybody on the road would have to pay. But, but anybody who didn't own land on the road could drive through for free as many times as they wanted to and use it for any purpose. And that's what we're objecting. But the idea is, and there are roads, there are roads that relatively few landowners have ownership of. And I'm quite certain that they could, would be quite interested in getting the public, you know, extinguishing the public easement and just exchanging right-of-way agreements. And then you have a private road, just like you have thousands of them, where the, the individual owners have to cross each other and they work that out. But you would only do this if everybody were to agree, that's all. But I think that would solve all the problems, but there are prob, there are these that would solve, be solved. Because there would be a huge incentive of a private landowner to say, I now have a legal right to get to my property. I have the right to maintain it if I choose to. And also, I don't have to worry about unrestricted access for anything that municipality wants it to be useful.
That's overly optimistic that it would solve all of the problems.
It would not solve all of them.
But it would be a major step.
I said it would not solve all of them.
Oh, okay.
I, I said, no, I said it would not solve them.
Okay.
I meant to say, I did not, would not solve them all. It would solve, it would solve some of them, but it is a step forward in some of them, for, for certain. And, and I, I mean, it's just a way to kind of start tackling this, this kind of stuff. But those, I think, are the priorities. I, I know, I appreciate, appreciate the language. Our issues on the, the language changes, we couldn't tell by looking at, when you changed the wording, we don't know if it, you know, it's complicated. You can change one word here and it could have been, you have to be careful what you change the word to and what, what section it applies to. Otherwise, it may take you in a direction that you never intended. And that was our concern with some of this language of automatically just changing this word to that. It, I'm not certain, we were never completely comfortable with just doing that without some further work. Some, what this actually would impact, would do if it changed that word to this word.
Well, like I just said earlier, we, if we added by a municipality and added the word "year-round" after it, "public easement not repaired or maintained by municipality year-round", what would the implications of that be in your opinion?
Well, the question is, is would you, if it was not maintained year-round, does that mean I could be forced into a public, a road association? We were concerned that that would be interpreted that way. And that, that by doing that, you are now creating a situation where I might be forced into a road association that would be maintaining a public easement and the, and not being able to control the access.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
So I'm not sure that adding "year-round" throughout was, is going to fix the issue that Mr. Doak is raising. However, the phrase that they're removing is "private way". And they define "private way" to be "public easement". If they just changed "private way" to "public easement" and left everything else off, I don't think it is changing the original intent of this, these sections. Whether or not the original, sorry. I don't think it changes these sections. Whether or not these sections can be interpreted to require what Mr. Doak is mentioning, I, I don't know. But I think changing "private way" to "public easement" without anything else is not affecting the meaning of these, these sections of statute.
Okay.
You may want to consider whether or not the commission goes back and has that discussion among themselves. Because part of what they're doing here is trying to clean up the words, get rid of "private way" because it means "public easement". So just, so is there a way for them to clean up the words without changing how this is, is written? I think there's an easy solution, but I don't dare, I am hesitant to suggest that the committee make that change without giving the commission the ability to mull it over with their shared expertise.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in Cumberland, I had a situation where I owned the road and several lots on it. And it was called Rangers, on the sign, it said Ranger's Way, Private Way. So what do we dip it into here?
So I didn't know about a rangeway until Rebecca Lambert mentioned it at one of the subcommittees. That is, and I will only say that it's an old, old concept. Perhaps from when Maine was part of Massachusetts. And that's all I know.
I think, so we had this discussion in Wyndham, was that we had private roads and private ways. And basically, they were, they were interchangeable. It was just a, you know, did you, or, or people were, so somebody lived on Smith Road, and it was a private road. And somebody lived on Brown Way. There was really no difference between the two of them. It was just whether you wanted to call it a street, road, or avenue, or way.
But this was a private road. I owned the road. And so to call it a public easement would infer that the public could come on it, which they were not, you know, allowed to.
Right.
Liabilities to the road, I would never do that.
Right.
So I think we're.
But like if it says "private way" on the sign, I don't think that actually makes it the old public easement, you know what I mean?
Road signs and street signs are not identifying the legal, legal status. They, they don't go together.
It's a, go ahead.
Maybe we could ask Rebecca Graham from MMA to weigh in on this. Because particularly this. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Engel and Representatives Stover and distinguished members of the state and local government committee. My name is Rebecca Graham, and I'm a legislative advocate with Maine Municipal Association. And I also serve on the Abandoned and Discontinued Roads Commission.
Specifically, a private road and a private way, are they the same thing?
They're not the same thing, in law, anyway, in statute. A private way that was created, basically, because there are these demarcations in time throughout the statute in which these terms meant certain things. The private way in statute is anything that was created by a discontinuance or abandonment prior to 1976, which means a public easement. So a public easement is something that was either automatically retained based upon another point in time when that road was discontinued and/or abandoned, and by which level of government. Whether or not that was retained by the community or not, public easement belongs to the public. It doesn't necessarily belong to the unit of government that holds it. And at one point in time, when the county has gifted back the roads to municipalities, if that, whatever they had done prior to that meant that there was no public easement retained. And the towns then kind of inherited a lot of those problems from that point in time on. And the discontinuance process is the same thing for extinguishment of an easement. It has to have a due process because, again, it, the public owns the public easement. The municipal legislative body holds that due process to extinguish it. So there are already factors in place to extinguish an easement. And there are already statute in place that allows you to form a road association on a road that has a public easement that is not maintained. That section of law hasn't changed. There was no addition. It just changed the private way into the public easement piece. Again, that's how the court treats that term. So there is already in existence the ability for, for people on a public easement to establish a road association.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you've heard Mr. Doak and his group talk about their concerns about the liability that attaches to the private landowners, the compelled participation in a road association that they don't particularly care to be part of, and on taking the costs of maintenance of, of that discontinued or abandoned road. In light of those, why would we continue to allow municipalities to simply give up those public rights? And I, I understand what you're saying. Like, there, there is a procedure they follow that nominally affords due process to different members of the community. We all know that despite it's technically meeting the requirements of due process, it doesn't give equal opportunity for people to show up. These meetings typically happen at times. I mean, people work at all times, of all different days. And so some people are going to be excluded of necessity. I just, I, I'm having trouble conceptualizing why if we don't allow a municipality to simply give away a chunk of land that's owned by the citizens in common, why would we allow them to continue to give away a right-of-way, or the roadway essentially, and give away the obligation of care for it?
Thank you for that question. I think a lot of the issues that this committee in particular hears about are historic things that municipalities can't do much about. It might be important to note that during our commission meetings, the local roads assistance program is one of the, holds one of the seats on that as well. And he advised that in the past five years, when he went through his records, there are about five of these roads that were discontinued or abandoned. Often, these processes come before municipalities now because there are folks that move on to those roads and have questions about the legality of the road. And lots of times, the municipality didn't actually own the public easement, but they have to go through that process, which is a legal process to determine the status of that road. So with regard to the inventory, that is, that is the process that they would have to go. They'd have to go through a process where there was a court determination on that. And they aren't discontinuing or abandoning roads by leaps and bounds. And a lot of the issues are about that historic, basically, retroactive issue.
So would MMA take any position at all if we were to proscribe future abandonment or discontinuance of public roads?
Well, you have already, abandonment is statutory abandonment anyways, is now essentially discontinuance, which does allow and creates a process for the members of that road to create the right of way that Mr. Doak was speaking about. That is already there and in statute now. And I think it gives them twelve months to sort that out already. Sometimes the problem is that you have folks that aren't willing to participate, so they can't get to that. And then in order to protect the interest of those folks, the public easement has to be retained. So I think that is a process.
So I was asking a slightly different question. I understand what the process is now. I'm asking whether MMA would take a position on our simply disallowing municipalities to undertake any future discontinuances, meaning they would have to hold on to not only what they currently hold in terms of rights, but also what they currently hold in terms of obligations of maintaining those ways.
I, I think probably the position would be that it's a mandate. And, you know, our positions are shaped by our seventy member legislative policy committees. So as to what that would be, historically, they don't like mandates, but that would be essentially a mandate.
Sure.
So, so your question was to prohibit municipalities from discontinuing roads. I would not be in favor of that because there may be times when the municipality doesn't have the interest or want to. But at least in statute, in the one twenty seventh, we put in place a process that they either do one or the other. So I think that problem's been fixed. I think we, we stopped the bleeding, so to speak. But I think this issue goes back to what was done prior. And there are multiple levels because some in nineteen seventy six and when the county roads were just turned back. I think that was the intent of the abandoned and discontinued roads commission to kind of unravel some of those pieces. But I, I wouldn't support prohibiting municipalities from abandoning or discontinuing roads or easements. Because I think there are times when it really no longer does serve the public interest.
Go ahead.
So I appreciate your comments, Representative, and I understand them. I spent a long time in municipal government. I understand why it is sometimes in a municipalities' interests to simply give up on a road. But I think every time you quote unquote fix a problem for somebody, you run the risk of creating problems for someone else. And I don't know that the public is, in all instances, served by the municipalities simply being able to say, we're, we're getting rid of this. We're giving it up to the folks that abut it. And so I was trying to explore whether the municipality, and I understand you've got a big group, you've got to go back and touch base with a lot of folks. I understand that. But I just wanted to start the conversation of what have we simply disallowed it in future so that we couldn't have any more creation of this exact same suite of challenges that that are being presented to us and that historically have been a problem?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wonder if we could fine tune that to be that they couldn't abandon or town municipalities couldn't abandon or discontinue roads that had landlocked parcels along it.
I think that was the intent with the public easement now to make sure that you couldn't, because sometimes you don't know until future as to whether or not that that is going to be a landlocked parcel. I think Representative Sinclair brings up a really valid point. What we find is that if you think you're doing something positive in one way, it turns out it can be used against you in another, and we're finding historic access cut off to some pretty important resources, everything from cemeteries to beaches to natural resource areas. And sometimes the municipality is completely not within their power to take that road back. There's a pretty prominent case in, in our district of that. There was no easement, but there had been a longstanding public use. New folks move in, remove that use. There is no municipal power there. One of the things I think just as a commission member that may be most beneficial for everyone involved is if there was an alternative dispute resolution process that would help folks sort through finding out what the status of those easements and roads are and trying to negotiate some of the neighborly disputes that go on there. Often, the public easement is the only way to kind of keep access going.
So I've got a, it, it really sounds to me like the town is towns and municipalities are having their cake and eating it too. Because they can stop maintaining a road, they can either discontinue it or abandonment, abandon it. And I, if they're both the same process, then we should just get rid of one of the, either make it discontinue. You know, the town can only discontinue a road. They can't abandon it. Right? If the process is the same, why keep both terms? But they get to basically, and don't get me wrong. I mean, I was on a town council. I get it. But if you discontinue a road, but keep a public easement, in theory, a town could do that to every road and never have to plow or maintain anything, but everybody gets to use it. And I, I just really feel like that's unfair to the residents. So I guess what I wanted to clear, one of the questions I asked Lynn was, so let's say the town decides they're going to give up a road, they're going to discontinue a road. And if we let the residents have that choice of forming a road association and giving each other easements, what would the town's interest be in that property any longer?
Well, they have that ability currently. That, that is the process going forward.
Okay. But they've, they've given the land, you know, the, this is my house, right? This is my property, and right here is the road. I own, I now own to the center line of the road. Correct? Does the, the town can just give that away? There's no constitutional issue with the town liquidating that piece of land to a private party, meaning the resident? Are you seeing where I'm saying, where I'm going?
Yeah, the towns don't often own the land underneath the road. The road is like a blanket. And it's an easement over that. So the easement is essentially a blanket, and they have the ability to pass. So even some of the main streets, the municipality doesn't technically own the land underneath. They just own the, the right of way and the public easement over that.
But if it's a town-owned road, right? So this street out here, let's just say, for example, and they just, and Augusta decides to discontinue it, they're going to give, they would be giving the residents on the road the property in front of their property to the center line of the road. Correct?
If they owned, if the town owned.
Physically owned, right.
But I, but they tend to not own the land itself.
If can the town legally give that property to those landowners without creating a constitutional issue?
They have to have due process. So again, it's the same thing, the same with the discontinuance of an easement. It's, it's a, it's the constitutional reverse. You're, you're having a public process to extinguish the easement in which the public is the owner.
Right. Can the state extinguish easements?
We would love for the state to take on all of the easements for municipalities. That would be great. The fiscal net would be enormous, though.
But no, I mean, if we, if we vacated all the easements, the, all the public easements, we wouldn't have. Okay, I'll.
There might be a bill.
Thinking about that some more. And then the liability issue that Mr. Doak brought up, that certainly is concerning because I think he's right. If the town chooses to create a public easement, I've got no way to protect myself.
Actually, in Title fourteen, one fifty nine A, the courts have historically given extreme deference to landowners and provided liability. And they have interpreted that on public easements or property that was owned by that individual to mean things even just about transferring, anything you're doing outdoors. While it's considered a recreational easement, the courts have weighed in on a number of points in time and said this is about pretty much anything, as well as conveyance. So the conveyance of a vehicle over a road that is not owned or is owned by an individual, whether it's a public easement or not, the landowner is not liable for any sort of damage that that incurred by that person unless there's an extreme negligent event. If you dig a ditch across to a public easement, that, you know, that's a very different matter. But there is liability already in practice. And even on private roads, the environmental liability, if it goes to a Great Lake, actually reverts back to the municipality in statute.
So so if there's plenty of court precedent, we could just add that. Right?
It was, it was a conversation that we had had in the committee meeting as well, in the commission, to try to address or at least allay the fears and maybe make it more explicit. I think some of the concern, even though the case law is, is really supportive of it, I think some of the concern is that it talks about recreational or harvesting activities, but the statute itself has been really broadly defined and used and applied in the court context to mean pretty much anything outdoors, regardless of whether or not you're, you're transiting in that space.
Okay.
And not doing anything recreational.
I just want to point out, I think there's two types of liability. The liability for if someone is harmed on your land. And then the liability, which isn't legal liability, that the landowner then has to do repair. So I think what Rebecca is talking about is the law that protects you when someone gets injured, when they're using your property, as opposed to the small L liability of the property owner to repair damage.
Okay. I was thinking more of the legal, the large, the capital L liability. And then it, it bothers me that towns don't have the inventories so that residents are ending up suing each other to figure out what the status is. Which is why I, I, I like the, well, obviously, I like it. It was my idea. That if a town chose to abandon and discontinue a road, they need to prepare a complete road inventory so that there is no question. I don't think it's a mandate because we're not making them abandon or discontinue roads. So I think that should be, could be something we would, could consider. I like the idea of commission creating a template to help residents form a right of way. I think actually there's something already on the DOT website that helps you with forming a a road association, but not necessarily a like easements et al, you know, for everyone. And I, I got to agree with Mr. Doak. I don't think I like requiring a road association on a public easement. Because they really didn't have that choice. I don't know. Those are my concerns.
Sure. So I really like the idea of if we were to allow municipalities to continue to go through the discontinuation process requiring that they give us an inventory. I just, I would also add that any future discontinuation municipal legislative act is ineffective until and unless they've provided that inventory. But I want to make sure we all have open eyes about the fact that just because someone at the town types it up as being in column A versus column B, that doesn't mean it actually is. That just means that's the municipality's best guess, and it's, it's still up to the courts to decide.
I mean, I remember when I was a police officer in Bauxford, we had, we had certifications for every public road. So that if I went to court for like an operating under or something like that, I could bring that form that said he was operating, he or she was operating on a public road. And I just am surprised that towns don't have that.
Thank you. I think that we had this conversation in the last session. And there was discussion about that and that the municipalities were required at some point having to do with nine one one, I believe, that they had to submit the all that information. But in the end, they didn't.
Right.
No, they didn't. They just didn't do it. No, they didn't. They did, but.
Yeah, I believe for nine one one, and I believe that DOT has what is identified as a, it's clear that it's a public road so that law enforcement can then charge someone with, right, operating under the influence. It's the, what is everything else? What are all those roads in Wyndham along the camps? Are they private roads? Were they a range way? You know, what, those are what isn't inventoried.
Okay. All right.
So the commission has created, actually, again, through the Maine Local Roads Assistance Program, a list of roads and whether or not they are publicly maintained. Or they are privately maintained, which they have on a, basically a map. And that's going to get, that's updated monthly. And I think part of some of our recommendations were that realtors would be using that to determine, you know, one of the questions that you have, you're supposed to be putting on your disclosure agreement is who maintains that road. This provides a map to show you that. So that list is there, and it's available on that, on the Maine Local Roads Assistance, and they have kind of an overlay for that as well. It's trying to get more dynamic, but it's in process currently.
Is that a list available to anyone? Or is that on your website? Not just realtors?
Yes.
I'm all ears.
I like the recommendation about alternative dispute resolution. I just wanted to say that. It's a great way to manage some of this instead of letting it it's a way to address it.
Go ahead.
I'm in favor of giving them ten more meetings and having them come back to us when a lot of these issues that we've been talking about are worked out more.
So that would be sixteen meetings a year?
No, it was bumping from six to ten.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, just to follow along with that, yes, that was part of our suggestion, you know, incorporating the the four points from Mr. Doak and possibly moving forward Section 6, which and changing the word and to or, but just using the the Section 6 to move that forward because that seemed to have support from everybody.
Section 6 on page four.
Yes, Section 6, page 4.
Line 31.
Lines 29 to 37, changing the word and to or.
That's the use of town equipment on public easements, and it would be to allow them to plow, maintain, or repair.
So would that would that contradict what the Supreme Court said earlier about using public funds to repair private roads?
This is not a private road. This is a public easement. That's the difference. Like the camp roads that we refer to, I think, in your community, those were private. These roads that we're talking about are public easements. The public may pass these roads.
I mean, if the town is in Wyndham's case, if the town is going to maintain it, they have to have had a public easement there. So, okay.
Or maintain or repair.
But so what do what do we do with the rest of this, though?
My suggestion would be only do section, the part of Section 6 that everybody was in agreement with, and then do unallocated language, shipping it back with some further instruction and allowing them 10 meetings to continue their work and report back to us next year.
Why not just 12?
That works for me.
Just keep 12 meetings. I mean, one meeting a month. They don't have to, but up to.
Up to 12.
Not yet. So. Ms. Graham, what do you think about the public easement not repaired or maintained by a municipality for 12 months, adding that?
The year round piece?
Yeah, that's it.
Largely, I mean, I think that that was maybe to address some of the issues within your community, the change of the language. Right now, the language change to public easement from private way is functionally the same thing. It's just providing clarity. So I think the not maintained or repaired repaired or maintained by municipality year round was to kind of address that potential of bumping up to the private and special law piece where you were getting a public easement for a certain set of period of time in order to maintain it.
But we do have that year round in one section.
Yeah.
That's a proposed change.
Yeah, where is that again?
That's the first time. That's on page one, line 17.
Okay, see, I don't. All I see is, oh, year round. Okay, sorry. I mean, my question is, is leaving that out of everything else, is that just a drafting error or?
I think for the purposes of that section of law, the reason that they wanted that in is because the private, they they saw the private way as being something different if there was occasional maintenance for the purposes of creating the the road associations. But I think our I think the commission's original comments were to just keep public easement there. I don't think that it changes the effect much, I guess, is what I can say.
Keep public easement, but not the rest. And I realize that calling it a public easement, not a private way, is a legal thing and is very specific. But I just see it as having, you know, if people start to get wind of it and not get the whole thing, that they're going to start going through all the private ways, the, you know, the privately owned roads. And and I understand it legally, but in the practical matter, I don't want to be chasing people around.
I agree, these terms, and this is something that the commission ran into, is that there has to be a lot of technical education around the terms, and that doesn't necessarily fit fluid reality or understanding your expectations at face value. So I think that was one of the hopes by changing this, that it might clarify that. It doesn't change how private way gets, you know, interpreted by the court, but I can see that being.
Senator Baldacci, would you like to introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Joe Baldacci. I'm a state senator from District 9, which is the city of Bangor and the town of Herman. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So are we saying strike every other change? Are you saying strike every other change?
My my suggestion is, and I won't put it in the form of a motion yet because I think we're still in discussion, was was to only make changes to to amend the bill, to only make the changes that were identified in Section 6, which are on page 4, lines 29 through 37, changing the word on line 34 from and to or, and then to add unallocated language, giving them some direction of the of the four points that Mr. Doak had had referenced. We could wordsmith those and put agreeing language and to allow the commission to work to meet 10 times and then to report back to this committee.
If I may, if we can agree that it's up to 12, they can do what they deem appropriate.
And I would also include the alternative dispute resolution.
Well, has that been?
Where is that?
That's not in here.
No, that's an idea, I believe, that was identified as when you were talking about, should you refocus the what the commission is working on? And that was a suggested idea for them to look into. And and it's been discussed previously in all this and many subcommittees. So I have a feeling the commission probably has talked about it.
So would it make more sense to leave that to the commission's discretion than requesting them to reexamine alternative dispute resolution?
In in the unallocated section, you could suggest go go back, look at what you've done here, come back to us if there's a way to do it that is satisfied, you know, that meets majority of the members' concerns. In looking at other issues, you could ask them, can you please focus on this and report back to us this year?
So I guess my question is, what is the downside of just changing everywhere it says private way, changing that to public easement? I mean, that's what this bill does. There is some other bonuses thrown in, like the Section 6. And like it, it just, to me, it cleans up language, which is what the bill was directed to do. Now, the 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 requiring a public requiring a road maintenance association on a public easement, we could certainly pull that out. But does anybody see the any huge impact to just at least giving the the changes with private way to public easement?
Mr. Chair, I mean, I mean, just for historical purposes, Ms. Manta might have some insight on that. And I would maybe ask if she could just briefly respond to that question with the leave of the chair.
Sure. Don't go far.
And and Mr. Chair, is your question, I just want to, is your question that use the change private way to just public easement without any of the additional words?
Yeah, that's what.
Throughout this entire section? And then the related question is, would that change be forcing road associations? Is that a related question? Because that was what Mr. Doak testified about. And I believe the Forest Council testified about.
I believe there's so under Section 2 on page 1, it basically it it says that three or more parcels, as long as three of the parcels are owned by different persons, may make written application to a notary public to call a meeting, the notary may issue a warrant. So is that currently in existing law?
Yes. It just says private way as opposed to public easement. So that whole Section 2 of calling a meeting is in public is currently in public law. That three or more parcels, there have to be four parcels benefited by private road or public easement. And three or more are owned by different people, then those three people can ask for a meeting.
Okay. But I'm so confused. The public. Okay. Is there an issue with just changing private way to public easement?
I, yes, I first I just introduced myself. I'm Roberta Manta. I live in Fayette. And I'm both a member of the Abandoned and Discontinued Roads Commission and the founder of Main Roadways. The issue here is that if we if we don't have that whole phrase about not maintain year round.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, what are the implications of changing the term private way to public easement, striking private way and adding public easement instead?
I think the problem there is that basically the town of Wyndham and other towns that have have put public easements on, or I should say, accepted private roads as public easements. We don't want to force anyone who I we don't want to force everyone who is on a public easement to have a road association. But on the other hand, we also don't want to say that if the town does any maintenance on your road, you're not eligible to have a pub to you're not eligible to have a road association. We still have the the concern about forcing private individuals to maintain what remains a public road. But that's already in there. We wouldn't be make it any worse by adding in this language. But it doesn't address the the constitutional question. That's still something that we've got to hash out. So I I think I would be in favor of just doing the Section 6 and doing some more work on the rest of it, see if we can work out some of these problems. We don't want to cause more problems in trying to solve one.
Go ahead.
Thank you. May I just ask the question about the ADR process? Would that be a mandate? Because I know it's expensive.
It really hasn't been fleshed out enough for me to be able to tell you what it would be. If it involved a municipality, then required a municipality to participate, then and there was cost associated to them, then that would be a mandate. If it was a voluntary process and they just had to show up if they felt like it, probably not. But that really hasn't been fleshed out, what that alternative dispute resolution would be.
Okay, can we, Ms. Graham, I'm sorry, can you come back up? So we heard Ms. Manta's explanation of changing private way to public easement. Do you see issues with changing the term private way to public easement?
Given given the historic marks in time that have been created every single time this this section of law is meddled with.
Yeah.
I I think I can I think I can safely say that private way means public easement. That's how the courts interpret it. So by defining it in, you know, as the public easement, as the courts have interpreted that, then I don't think the effect changes very much at all as to whether or not that's going to mess up a private and special law. I think that's beyond my pay grade.
Senator Baldacci, did you have a comment?
Should we indicate in the stat in the bill that those terms are interchangeable?
I believe that's in statute already. So the the definition of public easement already in Title 23 means an easement that's held by a municipality for the purposes of public access to land, water, not otherwise connected to a public way, includes rights enjoyed by the public with respect to private ways created by statute prior to 1976. Private ways created pursuant to former, the other sections of July 29th are public easements. So that's in statute already. I think the term private in that is what everyone gets hung up on and thinking that somehow it is exclusionary when it essentially effectively in law means public easement.
Okay, so this is this change would be basically accepting what the courts have already said, right?
Yes, and how they interpret that.
Sort of like the liability issue. Okay. So go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So then making the change here doesn't affect anything because it's already in effect?
I think the courts already interpret that term private ways as public easement. The maintenance piece of that that Ms. Manta brought up is, I don't know if it will be affected by that, if it would compel someone. I believe if a municipality, Section 6 essentially clarifies what is already practiced, a legislative body can allocate money for that maintenance. I don't believe that the act of that maintenance prohibits them from having that road association currently. And essentially, what they're doing is interchanging that word. So I'm less concerned about that. But I don't think that adding year round maintenance to that is going to change anything with regard to that particular interpretation.
I'm I'm particularly honing out on the part where if people are coming down a privately owned road and they're going to start suing, saying, I have a right, it's a public easement. I don't, you know, just I just think it's creating, has the potential to create some ambiguity among the public. And I don't think that it adds anything to this because it's already in statute. So instead of muddying the waters, I would be in favor of not changing that language.
Because if I understand correctly, they're interchangeable in the eyes of the law. Is that a stretch to say that? Is that correct?
I I'm like, let's just clean this up by changing it. That's what the commission felt was the best in this case, was changing that that term. Obviously, there are some things that we do disagree with that we could send back to them. But and that I don't I don't know that we ever gave them any direction. And it's entirely possible that there's an entirely new committee here next year that will look at what we've done and go, what were they thinking, right? But.
Every time I have to start this, it's a pain. Either you all have to stay, or Lynn has to stay for an eternity.
What's that?
It's a big lift.
Well.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move that Sections 29, or lines 29 through 37 on page four, have the change of "and" to "or" into "plow, maintain, or repair those public easements". And I would like to give the commission up to 12 meetings more per year. And I would like a focus to be on Mr. Doak's four points.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. We want to discuss that motion. So go ahead. I, I, let me just clarify one thing. Are we, are you saying that the only thing we're changing in here is the "and" to "or"? Or we're changing everything in here just with that change to "or"?
No, it was just, so the bill would only be the changes that are in Section Six, which are currently on page four, lines 29 to 37. And in addition to that section, changing "and" to "or". But that would be the entire entirety of the change in this bill. You're right, with the, with the maximum 12 meetings and the four points for Mr. Doak.
So I'm going to, because I just want to make sure we have this. On page two, line 33, we've changed private way to public easement. Is that part of the motion? So we're striking everything in this and only changing Section Six, subsection 3105A.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
No, yeah, the motion that, as I understand it, is the bill will include Section Six with the word "and" changed to "or", a revision to the number of meetings that are, the commission is allowed to have to, from currently six to up to 12. And then in unallocated language, you will be instructing the commission that between now and the next time they meet, that they look at, and Mr. Doak had actually six, but his original four were limiting the public easement, liability on the property owners, both personal and environmental. Status of the road, actually, I don't really have clearly what his four points were.
Can we have Mr. Doak come back up and review those points of this, please?
Yeah, Mr. Chair? Yes, I'm, I'm Mr. Doak coming up. But in his testimony, he identified on page three, those were the, the three points were there. And then it was the other one was the right-of-way template, I believe was his fourth point.
All right. So the four points would be the three outlined in Mr. Doak's testimony and the right-of-way template.
And personally, I have no issue with the idea of a Rebecca Graham's suggestion about a a process, a conflict resolution process for them to reexamine that. I think that would might, might be a helpful addition.
The alternative dispute resolution.
I think that would be probably helpful to keep it out of the court system, ideally. That would be good.
So are you opposed to changing the term private way to public easement?
Yes. Senator, here's my concern is, it's very, it makes it very explicit, the way I look at this. You're, you're amending the road association language, and you're making it very explicit that public easements are, are subject to the road association statute. So I think what you're doing is you're making it, says that landlords could be compelled to join a road association. It says private road. Is that, was that the intent when the statute of, was that the intent when the statute that was created to create a road association, was it an intent to mean easements? Or was it, was that term private way in that case, was that, was that really the intent of that? I think you're making it so explicit that, in fact, you are saying, yes, you can force landowners into a road association. And that's my concern. I, I would rather have you strike the word private way out of the road association language and say you don't want landlords to be forced into it. I mean, if you want to do that, I'm all in favor of that. But to me, you're, you're making a stronger case that it does apply. And that, that's my concern.
Okay.
If I'm, I hope, I hope that's clear. That's my concern.
But it, that would only apply to Section Two?
Under, under, anything that dealt with the but the road, but most of that whole section, doesn't that deal mostly with road association language?
And, and you, I don't think you'd want to change public way to public easement in just some of those
Yeah.
sections, because that's a subchapter of law. So
Okay.
either change all or none.
So that's something else, I think, that that commission should clarify is, what was their intent
Right.
with regards to Section Two?
I would absolutely support that, whether the, whether you really want road associations to be on a, on a public easement, landlords to be forced into a road association, or where there's, to maintain a public easement. Yes. Were there questions on my other, did you have questions on my other four? You've got, you've got them?
I've got them in front of me. So the motion included the three, the three in the testimony plus the right-of-way template. There have been two others that have been discussed, but the motion doesn't include the A D, the alternative dispute resolution idea.
Go ahead.
So it, it depends on how it's done. If it's done through the judicial process, you know, like, um, if it's using the AAA, help me with that. The American Arber Stration Association, that's expensive. But if it's used by a, if it's as someone who is like a retired judge who does this on the side and it's not so bad, that's one thing. So there's such a range, and I, I would not be in favor of requiring people who may not have funds to this process for others.
Yeah. I, I think the, the discussion was asking the commission in that unallocated section. So you made the motion that you would ask the commission to look at four things. And the suggestion was made to add that they also look in alternative dispute resolution. But I think what I'm hearing is you don't want to add that to the unallocated section in your motion.
Well, that's not to say that they can't discuss it. I, I, I want them to be particularly mindful that there may be people who are living in north there that may not have money for all these fancy disguises.
Just saying. Sorry, I'm not on mic. So I, um, I'm just trying to not force Asian people out of the process because they can't afford mediation.
I certainly agree with what Representative Copeland is saying. I just want to quickly note, ADR is always available to anybody who has a conflict. We don't have to specify in statute that they ought to think about it. I mean, frankly, anyone who has a conflict with a neighbor probably should be thinking about ways to solve it, other than the courts as a primary mechanism anyway. So I would not want the commission to waste any cycles on, on doing something that has no potential added value. I think they've got, frankly, enough work to do now. The only other thing I was going to respond in, in response to Representative Copeland's motion, I think you initially said with the focus of investigating the four points of concern that Mr. Doak raised. I, I would want it to be a focus. I mean, Mr. Doak represents one constituency, he does a good job of it, but there are a heck of a lot of other folks that are affected by any changes we might make.
I agree with that, and
I would agree on the second with that.
Can I just? I just want to ask MMA and Rebecca Graham, since you weren't here on Tuesday, do you think we've covered everything? Is there anything we've missed? There's a lot here.
Representative Stover, I, I think that we have zero issues with that section of law that, that you've allocated. And I think that that's, you know, it's going to be clearer for municipalities that they can assist to those folks. Anything that makes it clear, I think, helps future issues.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I'd just like the commission to think more about the landowner, too. So.
Oh, gosh. Shenanigans.
Go ahead.
Want to ask Mr. Doak that same question?
You do?
No, do you want to ask?
No, good.
Okay.
Do we vote? Okay.
Representative Underwood absent.
Representative Palmer?
Yes.
The motion is ought to pass as amended. Right?
Yes.
Representative Adams is absent.
Representative Greenwood?
Yes.
Senator Leifert is absent. Senator Baldacci?
Yes.
Senator Nagel?
Yes.
Representative Stover?
Yes.
Representative Clare?
Yes.
Representative Copeland?
Yes.
Representative Reisman, Representative Walker, both absent. Representative Mauve?
Yes.
All in favor, all present in favor with six absences.
Five.
Oh, I can't count. Five absences.
Next time we discuss a roads bill, I'd like to just solve the private roads issue entirely, statewide.
That's not going to happen, I don't think, Mr. Chair.
Why not?
You'd be a committee of one.
I am an optimist, but I don't think that's possible.
I'd just like the, the commission to think more about the landowner, too. So.
Oh, gosh.